Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the regular meeting for the Ojai City Council for May 24, 2016 to order. Sorry that it's so packed in here tonight. I think all the chairs are taken that I can see, but if there's any available chairs, raise your hand if you've got one next to you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Platts.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wirick.
Here.
Commissioner Law.
Here.
Commissioner clap.
Present.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, Councilwoman.
Oh, yeah, you did say that.
Clap, I said Commissioner, Councilwoman clap.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
I'm here, and can we have the folks in the lobby, please quiet down, or... Thank you.
They're totally quiet.
Thank you. And if Mayor Protem Wirick could lead us in the pledge, please.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have two presentations tonight. The first presentation is on tiny houses by Dan Fitzpatrick. Mr. Fitzpatrick, do you want to come on up and give us your presentation, please?
Good evening.
Thank you. No. Where is Dan? Maybe you could introduce yourself to us.
Good evening, members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss tiny homes as a means for affordable housing. My name is Vina Lustado. I have been a resident of Ojai for seven years, and I live in my tiny house, which I designed and built for more than two years. Mr. Fitzpatrick is here this evening at our invitation. In his capacity, is the California Chapter Leader of the American Tiny House Association. He has prepared an insightful presentation and discussion of amendments to Ojai's second dwelling unit ordinance to potentially accommodate tiny homes on wheels. Mr. Fitzpatrick has over forty years of broad executive-level management and administrative leadership experience in both public and private sector organizations. One of Mr. Fitzpatrick's passions is for affordable infill housing, including tiny homes and tiny homes on wheels. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Dan Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. Could you please introduce yourself, so we know, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yeah.
The woman that just gave the introduction, we'd like to know who she is. Oh, did she?
Yeah. I'm Dan Fitzpatrick, and at the invitation of your local Coalition on tiny homes and tiny home on wheels and affordable housing and sustainable growth and development for Ojai, I was asked to speak on your second dwelling unit ordinance, and in particular, the potential for including tiny home on wheels as an element for that. A little bit of my, just quickly, my background is I spent probably thirty years of my career in city management, redevelopment, public administration. Most of my career's been on that side of the dais, not up here as speaker. Another twenty years, I guess I'm dating myself, has been spent as a private developer. And in the last eight years, principally focusing in on development of infill housing on ten acres or less, where I maximize density and development. So, when the tiny home movement began several years ago, I was very fascinated with it. And one of my best friends started an actual shop and factory in Fresno on producing tiny home on wheels. And started out a year and a half ago with building one or two. He's up to almost three a month now. That's how quickly it's taken off. Looking at, I call this a presentation, tiny is the next big thing, and I gave the presentation to the planning commission, but in a lot of ways, it's really back to the future. Remember when we were kids, or at least when I was a kid, the average house size was a thousand square feet? And we had full families back then. It was mom and dad and three kids. Now what's happened over the years is the housing has increased in size, families have, you know, the number of folks in the house has dropped. It's now down to 2.6. So, in a lot of ways, the tiny movement is, I call, back to the future. I think if you live long enough, a lot of the stuff you experienced, you know, years ago, you know, come back. Remember the old days when, you know, it was really bad to live above a actual liquor store or delicatessen and so forth? Well, that's what I did in graduate school. Now it's the new thing, right? And so, if you hang around, it's back to the future. So, households are also today much more diverse. This is no longer the 50s of Ozzy and Harriet. These are very diverse households that we, you know, face. And if, looking at your housing element, one very interesting statistic just comes out and bites you right up front is over fifty percent of your units are with folks that are, you know, living in them of two or less people. So, you have a lot of big homes on big lots with one or two people, you know, in them. So, the whole idea of second dwelling units has a real, you know, interesting or, I think, sustainable idea and development here because the density already per home is quite low. Tiny home on wheels as second dwelling units, what are they and how are they different from other housing products? First of all, they are not the conventional trailer or motor home, right? Now, you have a lot of these all over Ojai. They're in your front yard, backyards, streets, side yards. Some have been beautified with beautiful blue tarps, you know, put over them. But, you know, there's literally hundreds of them. I drove around today versus a couple months ago, you actually have more now. But, what we're talking about, when I talk about tiny home on wheels, I am not talking about RVs. Your code specifically prohibits it, and I, you know, certainly recommend that you don't change that. Tiny home on wheels are built to resemble typical cottages or bungalows. These are very typical, you know, tiny homes that are sprouting up all over the country. The one to the right is Venus, which is a very nice, you know, house where she lives and works with her husband, you know, here in Ojai Valley. And they're built like a conventional house, but on wheels. You know, all stick-built, you know, all wrapped, insulated, meeting all plumbing and electrical, you know, codes, et cetera. These, comparing a regular RV to one of these is like comparing a Volkswagen to a Sherman tank. I mean, it's just, you know, apples to grapes, I guess. The one in the lower right-hand corner is one that was just completed out of the, you know, factory in, up in the Fresno area. The designs can aesthetically fit the community because you can put any kinds of siding, you know, on it, that, you know, they can fit the motif that you're trying to. If you're building an Alpine cabin, you might like something with the knotty pine or cedar, you know, siding. If you're building something in, say, a backyard in Ojai, something that's more of a Craftsman or bungalow-type style could fit very nicely. The one in the middle is sort of a, you know, modern style. They have multiple interior, you know, uses, where you can live, work, recreate. They're designed to meet one's particular needs. In the lower left-hand corner is Vina's little living room and, you know, office. The interiors are designed for independent daily living. They're for living, sleeping, cooking, sanitation, work and recreation. These tiny homes are built that you can have the small refrigerators and dishwashers and everything else, and some of them are big enough that you can have full-size appliances. Many of them even come with washers and dryers, or the combination thereof. My folks up in Fresno, and I know Vina recently built one, one is being built that's thirty feet long. I mean, that's a good-sized, you know, unit. That's eight feet wide, thirty feet, you know, long. So, they can hold quite a bit of, for both bathrooms, you know, for kitchens, for seeping lofts, you know, that, literally, your options are unlimited because you're, you know, you're either building them yourself or you're ordering them and designing them. You go to someone like Vina, who's an architect, designs them, and you take them to a builder, and they're built to your standards and your living situations. The benefits of tiny home on wheels to the community and users, one, they're affordable, and I'll have several slides on affordability. They're very energy-efficient. It certainly reduces one's carbon, you know, footprint, very low water and sewer, you know, consumption, much, much, much less than a, you know, normal single-family home or even apartment. And many of them are sustainable. A lot of folks that are building themselves are using sustainable products, using recycled material. A lot of the flooring and so forth are coming from things like bamboo, which is, you know, a renewable, you know, resource for flooring. Tiny home on wheels benefits, you know, are also, because they're on wheels, they're very easy to locate, hook up, and maintain. You pull them in, you hook them up to the water and sewer, they're there. You need, you know, something, let's say you need, you know, want to change the siding or whatever, out it goes, put it on, and it comes back in. What's also a benefit to both the user and certainly to the city is infill. It increases density without sprawl. The two major aspects of second dwelling units, whether they're tiny homes or tiny home on wheels, it accomplishes two things. One is, is you're increasing density without sprawling, accommodating a whole host of folks that are one- or two-person, you know, households at this point in their time and career. And number two, it helps with the whole issue of affordability. And we'll talk about affordability a little bit more, but it's one of the few things you can do that is zero cost to the taxpayer as it relates to affordable housing. Here's on the affordable, those of you that are investors, you know, I do a lot of investing myself right now, that the average tiny home on wheels costs between, say, sixty-five and seventy thousand dollars. And that's a well-appointed, you know, house right out of the shop. Your lot cost preparation in Ojai, I estimate at approximately twenty-five thousand, of which sixteen thousand five hundred is your sewer hookup fees. Now, just as a side note, that's ridiculous, you know, for a, you know, backyard cottage or whatever, to charge the full price as if it was a single-family home for a hookup. Here, you are working hard to create affordable opportunities, but you've got another entity that wants to charge sixteen thousand five hundred dollars to hook up to the sewer, and many of these tiny homes even have composting toilets, right? But you can hook them up to the sewer line and so forth. They use very little sewer and water. So, if you can cut that cost somehow, that'll help your affordability across the board. Now, your total investment, if I want to buy one of these and put it in my backyard, my total investment is ninety thousand dollars. I rent it out for, let's say, seven hundred and fifty dollars, you know, a month, that's almost a ten percent return on my money, right? What do you make at the bank? One, two percent? You know, bonds, you know, maybe two and a half? Junk bonds, three? You know, it's not much. Where this, you know, this is an investment that certainly can be very helpful for a person for an investment, but it's also helpful for the person that's looking for an affordable rent. These are numbers right from your housing element. Your median family income is eighty-nine thousand dollars. To meet the low income, which is fifty percent, or very low income at thirty-five percent, there's your calculations. There's what you have a year to spend on rent. For low income, it's about thirteen-five. The other is about nine thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. I did all these calculations before I found the actual chart in your housing element that did all of those. So, I was real close. Anyway, thus, there's a significant portion of Ojai households that can afford a tiny home on wheels as a second dwelling unit. And what's also nice is the cost of affordable housing of these type units is zero. Now, there's very few things you can do as a government entity, having been a redevelopment director and city manager and county administrator, et cetera. Producing affordable housing is very expensive. If someone builds market-rate housing, what do you have to do? Put in a couple million dollars or free land in your firstborn, and then you'll get, you know, then they'll reduce the price that you can have affordable, you know, units. That's millions of dollars from the taxpayers, and it takes federal grants, state grants. It usually takes all of the above in order to create affordable housing. Second dwelling units, whether they're stick-built or whatever, are one of the few options you have available that costs you zero. You're already paying for police, fire, you know, water, sewer, the roads, et cetera, out there. This is going in someone's backyard. Those costs, you know, they're already sunk. They're already in your budget. And you're saving land, you're not sprawling out into the orchards or farmlands on your, on the periphery. Now, there is a difference between the cost of stick-built versus tiny home on wheels because when you do a stick-built house as a second dwelling unit, you have to have architectural plans. You've got to trundle down here and, you know, have them reviewed and pay a bunch of fees, and then you go back and you build it, and every step along the way, inspectors come out and charge you more fees and inspect it. You have to have it a foundation. All of this takes additional time, and that also, you need additional square footage because of the difference of codes, you actually have to build more square footage to accommodate the same needs for stick-built versus a tiny home on wheels, and I'll get to that in the next slide. So, basically, you're adding another thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars onto the cost of our, remember, our ninety thousand dollar total package before in order to do a stick-built, you know, home in one's backyard. But there's pros and cons of, you know, all of those. The, there's a lot of flexibility of use, and this is why tiny home on wheels can be very useful. It's just one element. It's not for everybody, but for certain folks that they have a particular need for, like, a live-work office in their backyard, or an in-law suite, or caregiver, you know, place, or a, you know, a guest house when the kids come to visit, or, you know, grandma and grandpa, you know, come or whatever, there's a tiny home or a place for them. Or student housing. It could be a small studio in one's backyard. And if you are an investor type, it can be a very affordable, you know, rental. You can make money and provide rents that a number of your citizens certainly can afford. The flexibility is important because you may have a particular need that you don't want to build a, you know, full-blown, stick-built, on-foundation, permanent, you know, structure. You may want to meet, you know, particular needs, and then it can be moved, you know, elsewhere later on. Now, under the current Ojai code, the cottages below may very well be considered legal second dwelling units, and they're very pretty, you know, very nice units. Problem is, that's what they really are. They're tiny home on wheels. There's a picture of them without me photoshopping out the wheels, is those are not permitted, legal, not legal. You know, that's basically the difference, a different type of foundation. And so, if and when they're placed on a property, one would totally screen, you know, the wheels and whatever, so it looks like, you know, a backyard cottage, not like what you see on the picture there. Would look more like that than that. The, so, in your tiny home, you know, in your ordinance on second dwelling units, you need to define, you know, tiny home on wheels, establish design criteria, and have code standards. And I went over with the planning commission definitions for, that you could insert in your second dwelling unit, that very clearly defines what is a tiny home on wheel. So, it's separated clearly out from an RV or a trailer, you know, that it's licensed and registered with the Department of Motor Vehicles. That's important because, you know, that ensures the safety and the weight limitations and the whole bit on tires, axles, you know, frames, you know, et cetera. And it also determines the size. It can't be over a certain size because it's got to be able to travel down a highway to get to a property. And it has to be meets ANSI code standards. ANSI is the American National Standards Institute Building Code Standards for Tiny Home On Wheels. You want it to be, you know, that it's towable, and it's certainly not designed to be a self-propelled vehicle, certainly not an RV. It's no larger than allowed by California state law. That when it's sited on a parcel, that the wheels and undercarriage are skirted, that it has at least a hundred and forty square feet of first-floor interior space, has all the permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. That's right out of your current code. You know, you're just saying, you know, this particular product needs to be meted, and it needs to be designed, this is the key one, it needs to be designed and built to look like a conventional building structure and meet the design criteria, and that's your code section on design, right? So, it has to meet that code requirement. All of you are certainly want to make sure that anything that is located and built in your community meets code standards. When you build a stick-built building, it has to meet certain, you know, building code requirements. The American Standards, American National Standards Institute provides the criteria for building these things. It's nationally recognized, and it is the recognized standard of the state of California. This is a quick little chart showing the building code standards. If you build a stick-built or modular, it is governed by the International Residential Code Standards, right? If it's a mobile home, which is over four hundred square feet by definition, it's by HUD regulations, and if it's a tiny home on wheels, it's ANSI standards. So, there's, you know, there's differences between, you know, codes, and each type of unit has to meet those codes. Thus, we're certainly, you know, recommending in your ordinance and so forth that the builders of tiny homes need to get certified through nationally-recognized firms that certify the building of these structures, and they literally have seals and everything on them, and you want that presented to you at the time you take an application. That Pacific West Associates or the Recreational Vehicle Industry Association have certified it. Again, they are both state-certified. The state doesn't have their own people. They go to these folks to certify these types of, you know, vehicles and they're built. Without standards, you know, you could end up with something like this, and you certainly don't want that. You want, you want something that looks good and that's safe and sound and secure, right? That's a no. One interesting element in your code is, your code right now says, "The second unit shall mirror or complement the primary residence in form, height, number of stories, material, and color." And I refer to that as the mini-me design criteria. Is basically, you know, you have a small clone, that if you have a white stucco house, you are to build a white stucco house in your backyard. And that doesn't make a great deal of sense. But, Ojai should not feel bad about this ordinance. Some planner in the 60s or 70s came up with it, and I find this in all codes all over the country. I mean, this is a standard, you know, language, and many, many cities are getting, you know, away from that language because it doesn't make any sense. You want designs and so forth that fit the unique nature of your city, your neighborhood, certainly the property, and it's also compatible with a tiny home on wheels. I gave the planning commission some ideas for amending the language, that if the second unit is visible from a city street, it shall complement the character of the primary residence or general neighborhood. Gives you more flexibility. But if it's not visible from the city street, that you have more flexibility in your design, you know, criteria. And every picture you've seen in here are, you know, real-life tiny home on wheels that you, that are being built and sited around, you know, the country. There's not one of these that wouldn't look nice in most backyards in the city of Ojai. Also, remember I said, we've got to make it very clear that RVs are not permitted. You have a section in your code where it says, "Mobile homes and travel trailers should not be permitted as second units." We just add in there, other than if they're defined, that very narrow definition of tiny home on wheels that we defined up front. They have to look and feel and taste and smell like a conventionally-built, stick-built, you know, house. Also, there was an item that came up during the planning commission, and I came up with some language to help that, is, you know, basically, when you have something that can roll away, is you have basically two approvals. Approval one is to site. You know, is it permitted? Is the lot big enough? Is the setback correct? Is it set up, you know, hooked up properly to water, sewer, you know, systems, you know, and the like? And then, the unit itself is approved. Does the unit meet the design criteria? Okay. You get the approvals, they roll it on and so forth, and let's say they decide to move it out, and someone moves another one back in. I'm sure none of you want, basically, a space rental system that someone's coming in every month with another, you know, unit. The neighbors will get upset, et cetera. So, what I'm suggesting, that you add a provision in the code, that if you do allow tiny home on wheels, that you're only allowed one in a twelve-month period. You know, in other words, when you get your site approved and your unit approved, you cannot come back in for twelve months for another one. So, you better have a long-term tenant, you know, there, on their mobile home, or you're going to have paid sixteen thousand five hundred dollars for a water permit and no one, you know, to pay a rent, you know, to use it. So, that ends my presentation. Again, here's two very nice units that, you know, are located in different areas of the country, and I would certainly, just back to affordability real quick, affordability in your housing element is not something that can be taken lightly.
Point of order. Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if we have any idea how much longer the presentation is? We have a very full, legitimate night. We have a lot of people here that would like to speak, and I want to make sure that they all have time to do so, and it's a work night, so I was wondering if this could be...
I think he just said he was at the end of his presentation.
I'm done, and one second.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to make a point as it relates to affordable housing. You have your housing element, and the state of California is taking those housing elements and meeting your requirements and trying to do your best efforts very seriously. And to the extent that they're, the state of California, both the legislature and now Jerry Brown signed on to it just last week, is looking to take away approvals of affordable housing from local governments because they are not dealing with the affordable, you know, issue. So, I would urge you, as well as any other government entities, tiny home on wheels, tiny homes, second dwelling units as low-hanging fruit to help move forward towards meeting your goals and showing the state that you're making your efforts, et cetera, versus all those bad other cities that aren't, you know, doing it. So, that ends, and I'll be here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Does council have any questions, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
No.
I don't have a question, Mr. Fitzpatrick, but I do have a question for staff in regards to his presentation. Thank you. I enjoyed your presentation. Is there anything that the planning commission is recommending to the council in terms of the presentation done at their meeting in regard to tiny homes? I'm just wanting...
I can get ahold of Ms. Wald and see if I can get her to answer your question. Hang on, please.
Councilman Haney?
Mayor, where I'm at on this is, I'd like to maybe, if I can get another councilperson to go along with me, but maybe agendize this and have a discussion on tiny homes and how they'll impact second-unit dwellings as well as our housing element. So, if I can get a second on that, we can agendize it and bring it back.
I'll support that, and no disrespect to Kathleen. Please keep your comments extremely short.
Oh, okay.
Because we're going to bring this up at a new, at a next meeting.
Okay, so, the planning commission...
It's a future meeting, we disagree. It's a future meeting, we disagreed. Okay.
Do I need to just go bye-bye then?
Maybe.
Councilman Law, you're the one that asked the question.
Yeah, I guess that was my question, to see if it was going to come before us, or else I'd be interested to come before us if the planning commission wasn't.
So we talked about the agenda this, this afternoon, just happened to be on topic here. And as we know, the city, the planning commission worked to develop a term sheet, a thing, a list of items they feel that they should bring forth to the city council to ask for revision to the second-unit ordinance. And that we, I believe, Steve, is this not correct? We decided to push that off until June 28th?
I'd have to double-check the list.
Yes, June 14th is a very robust meeting, so the, so we decided to bring it June 28th. But that is something that all their recommendations will be bringing forward to you for you to recommend, what you direct them to work on. Is that answered? Okay.
So is it currently on the schedule for our agenda on the 28th?
I'm 99% certain that we have it for June 28th.
Okay. Then is there any further discussion that the council wishes to have on this subject? Okay. I do have some speakers' cards on this, but this was really just a presentation tonight. And I'm going to ask that the people that were here to speak about it hold off till we actually have it as an agenda item. We have a long agenda tonight. So if you'd please keep your thoughts, when we put it on, presumably on the 28th, please come back and give us your opinions. Generally speaking, during a presentation, we don't, we would honor your request for, to speak, except tonight we have an extremely long agenda and lots of speaker cards. So please come back on the 28th, and we're going to be able to put more time with this particular topic.
And just to confirm, it is on June 28th. We just checked the list. Thank you.
All right, we have another presentation this evening, the 2015 Emergency Response Metrics for the City of Ojai. Norm Platt, our chief, our fire chief. Welcome, Norm.
Thank you, Mayor Blatt. Distinguished members of the city council, Norm Platt, Division Chief for West County Operations. I'd like to first speak a little bit about public safety. So in the event of a fire emergency, anybody on this side of the building, if you could go out that exit, anybody that's on this side, go out that exit, and city council, follow Chief Kenny there.
Thank you.
You'll go out this exit. So I'm going to just be real brief. Basically, in 2015, we saw an overall increase between the months, ending in September, of 7.1% increase in overall responses. We had a total of 996 responses from, from the City of Ojai Station 21. This is just a breakdown of how your responses in the city go by quarter, going back to 2014. Here's an overall graph between October and December of '15 versus the same period, October through December of '14. And this is just the overall July through December. And then this is your breakdown of your full year, January through December 15th versus January through December of the year 2014. And this is how the City of Ojai's responses mirror the County of Ventura. So it's pretty similar as far as the, the call type, with the highest number being medical type, medical calls, and then the breakdown from that, point hazards, conditions, alarms, public service calls, rescues, and then fires. Here's your breakdown of your medical calls, both throughout the whole year. The, the top call type for medicals are falls. And that's true also in your, your full year, looking back from January through December, sick person and then people injured in traffic accidents totaled 125. The next map that's interesting, this is where the fires occurred in 2015 within the city of Ojai geographically. This is a call density of where the medical calls occurred within the city of Ojai by area within the city. And then this is a map, the yellow indicates the city, the traffic collisions that happened with, that resulted in injuries within the city of Ojai for 2015. This is the area where your public service calls, these are typically, they might be assist people up, water leaks, different types, you know, maybe a rattlesnake in their yard, that type of call. And these are where these calls occur. And that's your total demographics of your calls for 2015, where they occur within the city, all call types, including fires, traffic accidents, public service, and medicals. And that's the end of the program. I take any questions? I would like to end by saying that there was some smoke in Ojai last, last week on Wednesday. We were conducting, I was the incident commander on the control burn in the Barlow Canyon. We burned off 130 acres. And you think, what does that have to do with Ojai? But these are areas of opportunities where we can catch a wildfire. Managing the wildlands is important. Prescribed burning is just one of the ways that we manage the wildlands, but allows us to get targets of opportunity to stop wildland fires that potentially could start in Ventura, move this way. So it does provide some benefit, even though there is some smoke that occurred from that. And lastly, I'd like to say that we are having an increase in our responses, even with cool temperatures. Had a fire, 187 acres in the city of Los Angeles that burned in the Angeles. And then we had the Casitas Fire back in late April that burnt over 50 acres. So the fuels, even with cool conditions, are responding aggressively to fire. So I would just say, June 1st is our annual deadline for weed abatement, and we encourage everybody. One thing nice is that we have great citizens here in the city of Ojai, and they always take care of the weed abatement. We have had no lots that we had to mitigate back in 2015. I'll take any questions.
Any questions by the council of Chief Platt? No. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to our public communications portion of this meeting. As you know, this is a time we set aside for public comment on items that are not currently on our agenda. And we have exactly 10 cards, and we have, we have 30 minutes set aside for this, so three minutes apiece. Please stick to your three minutes or less. And the first speaker is Richard Keat.
I'm Richard Keat, and I live here in Ojai. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. I'll make this less than three minutes. Our latest troubles over our 1010 property involve, I noticed that we received on January 6th of this year, when, when we basically were told that our property was abandoned and that we had to pay a registration fee and, and to provide a deed of trust and so forth and so on. Anyway, excuse me, just kind of, this always gets me a little bit worked up. But anyway, cutting through that, that turned out, well, our property's never been abandoned, so the issue's been dropped, but it took a little while to get that to happen. In the meantime, we got a second notice, basically telling us that the property was blighted and ramshackled. Excuse me. And, and yeah, the paint is peeling on it, and it, and you know, there's, there's some repairs that need to be made. So after receiving that notice, we thought, well, we'd start, you know, doing some repairs to the exterior of the house and to prepare to repaint it and so forth. And, and then that got shut down because we didn't get a permit to paint the house. We didn't realize that, you know, well, do understand that, that, you know, the codes have changed, and you do have to get a permit to paint your house if you're in certain districts and so forth. So we decided we'd start that process. And turns out that it was recommended, and this, I have no animosity towards anybody in the city or any of the staff, they're, they're doing their best, but there's a lot of confusion in the planning department. And I'm not blaming anybody there for that either. I think that some of the rules are very difficult to fully understand, even for them. So the first step then was to pay $120 fee because our property is in an aesthetic corridor to get an exemption from having to go through a very long process to get approval for a paint job and some repairs. Then what it turned into was a, the idea that we're on the historic registry, so that property's on the historic registry, so we'd have to pay a $200 approximate fee to have a historic consultant give us a letter of recommendation that maybe our repairs and paint job wouldn't require even, even more effort on our part. And it turned out that that was wrong. We actually had to get a full historic consultant report for about $2,000 to be able to proceed. And, and that there was a possibility of getting that waived if we would go before the Historic Commission and pay $450 to have a review by them. That might suggest that we don't have to have that full report. So in, in looking into that further, it turns out that as things stand, I was, I was told, I won't mention any names...
Please wrap it up.
That you might have already been, oh, am I, my time's up?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, sorry. Yeah, time really flies when you have...
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Marcy Tasher?
Mr. Mayor, one quick, if I could jump in. Could you ask him to reconfirm his address? I didn't catch the street name at the beginning. We're going to look into this, but I need the address.
I'd like to have the, I'd like to have the city council or the city manager look into the comments that you just made to see what's going on. And if you wanted to contact any of the council people, I'm sure that we'd be willing to see if we can help as well. Marcy Tasher?
Mayor, councilman, councilwoman, I am blessed, I feel blessed tonight, I'm able to read for a neighbor of mine a statement. She really wanted it read so everyone could hear it. And she feels blessed that she has a real-life neighbor rather than a tourist to read it for her. Dear city council members and neighbors, my name is Peggy LaSara, and I reside at 403 North Ventura Street. I regret that I'm unable to be in attendance. It is my understanding that others will be addressing various issues of concern regarding both the petition to include the STR ordinance on the ballot in November and the ordinance itself. As such, I'll focus on a more general concern, the progressive disintegration of the quality of life in any community when the ratio of non-stakeholders to stakeholders increases, and the unsubstantiated argument that Ojai's economic vitality is inextricably dependent upon further accommodating transient non-stakeholders in our community. The proposed ordinance allows for 90 STR permits, with 45 of these permits for STRs without an owner on site, and each permit allows for up to 12 rental inhabitants. These STRs, in accordance with the ordinance, are not limited by any previous zoning ordinances and can be situated anywhere within the city limits. All told then, the ordinance would allow for 1,080 transient non-stakeholders to be interspersed into a community of approximately 7,600 residents. That's up to one in eight people in the neighborhoods who do not necessarily have an investment in Ojai's social or physical health. Some of the transient non-stakeholders will be travelers coming for one of Ojai's many festivals, others will be people who are just coming to party, and some will be here for sundry other reasons. But the fact is, if this ordinance passes, these non-stakeholders will, will not be housed in areas designated for businesses where people with small children or those walking with their elderly relatives will know to exercise extra caution. I'm going to skip. Several unexamined arguments are being made in favor of STRs. One such argument is that the city's economic vigor is dependent upon an ever-increasing accommodation of tourists. Some Ojai retailers came that, claim that the people who live in Ojai don't spend money in Ojai stores and have little impact on the sales tax revenues that support the city. When one of these retailers recently made his claim to me, and I calculated that I spend 5/7 of my income in Ojai, I'm simply not spending it on items that are sought after by tourists. Insomniac, I'm opposed to the ordinance for STRs because it is primarily designed to serve those people who do not live in Ojai and those who profit from people who do not live in Ojai. It is not meant to enhance the quality of life in Ojai. It's designed to enhance the quality of life for those who profit from catering to non-Ojaians. As such, it disintegrates the strength of the Ojai community and diminishes the quality of life for those who live and work here, stakeholders who are participating in the care and protection of the natural environment and the cultivation and preservation of the social culture. Sincerely, Peggy LaSara.
Thank you, Marcy. And I assume you're, when you're referring to the ordinance, you're referring to the ballot measure that the citizens are going to be voting on?
That's what you meant.
Okay. Duffy McPherson?
Hello, I'm Duffy McPherson. I own and live at 334 Descanso Avenue, Ojai. And I want to talk about discussion item two, enforcement of short-term rentals.
Okay, this is part of public comment.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you'd sit down, I'll mark you down as talking about item number two. This is for public comment during the non-agenda items.
Okay.
Deborah Pendrey?
Thank you, Mayor Blatt. Councilmembers, Deborah Pendrey, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. As you know, with city support, we initiated a Save Our Water Ojai campaign, which we then leveraged for a Southern California Gas Company grant, and we are gaining support from the local water agencies with either in-kind professional services or funding. Our goal is the efficient use of all our regional water resources. We strive for a public fully aware of all available water efficiency and conservation tools, methods, and practices. To that end, we are hosting a presentation this Thursday, Living with Drought: The Politics, Science, and Practice. Our speakers include Tom Ash, he's a senior environmental resources planner at the Inland Empire Utilities Agency. Tom has 29 years of experience in the fields of water use efficiency, public education, and horticultural. Steve Wickstrom, he's the general manager of Casitas Municipal Water District. Steve is a registered civil engineer in California with a bachelor's degree in environmental engineering and has been with Casitas for 32 years. Russ Baggerly is another of our Ojai Valley Water Aficionados. Russ sits on the boards of Casitas Municipal Water District, the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency, and the Ojai Valley Sanitary District. We've brought these speakers together to talk about our water future and what we can do about it. This is a free, a public event, and again, it's Thursday, this Thursday, May 26th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Ojai Presbyterian Church, located at 304 North, 304 North Foothill Road. And that is in Ojai at the corner of Aliso Street and Foothill Road. Then we have two workshops scheduled. Saturday, June 4th, we'll have a class on rainwater harvesting and turf reduction. And then Saturday, June 18th, we have a Graywater 101 Laundry to Landscape workshop. And all the details can be found at theojivalleygreencoalition.org website. That'sojivalleygreencoalition.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Dennis Leary?
I want to speak about something I'm really concerned about. It's more of a general nature, which doesn't impact Ojai directly, but indirectly it will. I'm really concerned about the economy, the national economy and the global economy, as it will, if something happens, that it's going to really affect Ojai. Back in 2000, we had a slowdown, and it wasn't too bad. 2008, we had a, we had a bigger one. And it was, really came close to being a real problem. But as we know, taxpayers bailed out the big banks, and the system goes on. Now, these eight-year cycles has come around again. These happen just before an election, and we're coming up on an election. And some of the sources that I'm reading say it could be a real bad one this time. So my concern is that what is, what are we doing as a community to provide safety in case this happens? I hope it never does, but many of the signs indicate that we're going to have a, at the very least, a pretty definite slowdown, if not something more drastic. So I'm thinking that even psychologically, we should be aware of this possibility, so that we can prepare ourselves and our, you know, our families and so on. What are we going to do if things get really bad? And I'll leave that to your imagination. I really, I don't live in the city of Ojai now, but I did, and I may again. And I come here every day, practically. I make use of Ojai, and I love it. And I don't, I would, if it was my, up to me, I would like it to stay just as it is, because it perfectly suits my needs. It's wonderful here. I wouldn't want to be in other, any other place. But if things kind of fall apart, where, do we have any kind of plan, other than like how to get out of the city quickly, or, or stock up on food, or, you know, save some... water, or what? But I mean, as a whole community, if this hits us hard, what are we gonna do? I mean, at least we should have some thinking about it, and, and we don't, not that we have to do anything, but be prepared, you know, it's like, better be, you know, what is it, sorry, rather than, I don't know, some kind of thing like that. I forgot what, anyway. I see the counting going down here. Take full advantage of the opportunity. Anyway, love y'all.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Dennis. Sherry Stuckey?
Good evening, everyone. I was asked by the Short-Term Rental Advocacy Group to share my experience with respect to obtaining signatures for their ballot measure. Hello?
No, this, no.
Excuse me?
I don't believe it is.
Oh, okay, all right. Mayor Blatts, I was asked by the Short-Term Rental Advocacy Group to share my experience with respect to obtaining signatures for their ballot measure. In the past, I rented out part of my home as a short-term rental while I was away. I never considered offering it as a long-term rental, because I live in it, so I'm not taken away from housing stock. Though I rented my property infrequently, I was still very concerned about my neighbors. When the Short-Term Advocacy Group asked me to help obtain signatures, I was a bit nervous to ask my immediate neighbors to sign the petition, because I wasn't sure if they had ever developed a concern about my rental activities. I was pleased, however, when all of these neighbors signed the petition willingly. I learned that they support the concept of short-term rentals, because they believe that it is good for the local cultural heritage of Ojai, and that it boosts our small economy. In total, I received 29 signatures within a two-hour time period without much effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Christine Golden?
Good to see you all. Well, this is really a question, and I know you can't answer my question, but I'm gonna put it out there anyway, and this also has to do with the initiative for the short-term rental. So I wanna separate apples from oranges, because the only thing I wanna talk about is residentially zoned areas of Ojai. And I live in a residentially zoned area, so I understand that somebody could rent a house out next to me, and I understand that somebody could have a second unit that was compliant, and that could be something that could happen in my residential zone. But I wanna know, can a citizen initiative actually kinda turn over the use of residential areas? Can they actually do that, so that all of a sudden, if that thing passes, I bought a home in a residential area, but I could have a little mini hotel next door to me? I mean, the question is, is that legal? Can that happen? Does California let that, I mean, well, that's it. Just a question. I just, I really would like to know the answer. I know you can't answer me, but I really would like to know if that's possible. It's very upsetting to think it's possible.
Thank you, Christine. Councilman-
Yeah, you know, that's a question that's being asked a lot, and I'm wondering if it would be appropriate for our city attorney to maybe explain the initiative process, so that the citizens can understand what it is, how it is, how it works? I think that'd be very helpful.
Do you think it's appropriate, Mr. Summers?
As requested by the council, I can speak generally, real briefly, of course, because we have a short amount of time. In short, under the California Constitution, the people of the state reserve to themselves the initiative power. It is not a power granted by the city, it is a power the people reserved for themselves against or not given to the state and to the, and to the cities and counties. An initiative, if approved by the voters, is the same power as the council has, no more, no less. Therefore, the city through, the city's voters, through an initiative, processed in compliance with the Elections Code, put on the ballot, and adopted by the requisite number of votes, has the power to rewrite the zoning code. It has the power to rewrite the initiative, pardon me, to rewrite the general plan, and it has the power to rewrite any other city policy or provision that the council has the power to write, because the voters have the same power through the initiative process that the council itself has. And in fact, a little more, because an initiative does not have to go through SEQA if proposed by the voters. If the city puts an initiative itself on the ballot, SEQA is required to be accomplished. But, under a couple of cases, because SEQA is a, at its heart is a notice statute, SEQA is intended to provide the community an understanding of the potential environmental impacts of a proposed project. Cases have concluded that the voters are presumed to know what they're doing, and should the voters put something on the ballot themselves, they're presumed to be aware of the environmental impacts of that measure, and therefore, voters putting an initiative on the ballot itself does not require compliance through SEQA. And that's, in short, and as, as is evident, there's an initiative being processed right now, and that's going through the process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Summers. Anything, oh, okay, okay. Jared, and it, is it, I can't read the first letter, Owens, is it? Okay.
I'm Jared Owens. I've lived here in Ojai for 65 years, and I'll keep it short, I'd just like to say that I'm in favor of the short-term rentals. I think it's, it's really worked out good for me. I, I live by myself, and I rent out one room on weekends, and then I have the option of having my family there or friends, and I've met a lot of wonderful people, and they're not bothering anybody, and I get a lot of thank you letters, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Baxter?
Actually, it's Bader, Glenn Bader.
Excuse me.
Yeah, no worries. Again, I was unaware if this was my time to speak, after reading the scenarios about not pertaining to the issues at hand today. But after listening to the last two or three people, I, I obviously, they're speaking on the same short-term rental scenarios that I wanna mention here. But I've been a resident here for about 25 years. Again, we rented first, then we purchased a house that needed a lot of work. Mr. Haney knows, I believe, my residence. We did a lot of work on it, put a lot of money into it, and we also put a second story, what I call an apartment, but we basically built it for my family, my parents, before they passed on, in case they needed it. Since they're now gone, we decided to go ahead and put it up for the short-term rental. And, I mean, just the very weekend after that, we were notified that it's now not legal to do so. But with my experience with short-term rentals opposed to the long-term rentals, which I've had a house in Palm Springs years ago, and I had to put it up for sale, and I couldn't afford to make the payments, put a renter in there, and they paid me one month's rent, and basically, for the next six months, I had to take them to court, which inevitably, I lost my home. I had to do a buyback with the bank and so on. So with a lot of the turmoil and the things that I've been reading on some of the Ojai Facebook, which some of you ought to be really embarrassed about that, by the way, it's just insane with regards to the, to the, what can I say, some of these different theories and whatnot, that they state that the short-term rentals are gonna create a problem. The pros about the short-term rental is if you have somebody in there that is an issue or is creating a lot of noise, or, or, you know, you don't like them being there, or they're doing something against your, your rules and so on, you can get them out. But if they're there long-term, basically, you're stuck with them. You're stuck with them for at least six months, they're gonna, they're gonna continue to make the noise that a lot of these people here are protesting against. They're all gonna, you know, continue to create a real issue, more so than if a person was in there, because, on a short term, because you do have the right to evict them or ask them to leave. Once they, they grow roots, once they start getting their mail at that address, there's a lot of state rules and regulations that pertain to renters, and it works against the benefit of the homeowner, and it also works against the benefit of the community at hand. Because, again, listening to these people stating that, you know, there's parties going on, and there's DJs and all the rest, this kind of stuff, if you have a long-term rental, you can't stop that either. So the bottom line is, you have a lot more options to, to make this happen and to, you know, get them out in case there are issues.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you very much.
Barbara Bowman?
We all know each other, we've been doing this, Barbara Bowman, I've lived here, I don't wanna say how long, because it gives my age away. Anyway, you know, I loved the presentation we had tonight, on the little houses on wheels, because the whole thing I wanna talk about is, people keep trying to equate short-term rentals with a lack of affordable housing. My feeling is, affordable housing has been passed over time and time again. A council before this, when the Ojai Valley Inn was supposed to build affordable housing, they didn't like the location they were gonna build it, so they never had to do it, they bought a building and just refurbished it. Several people have tried to put affordable housing in different locations, it's been turned down every time. I think it is criminal that we have such an elitist attitude, that the same people who are fighting short-term rentals are also completely against building any affordable housing. The city does have, I know, specific land in specific places, even better than putting these units as second dwellings. Wouldn't it be wonderful to pick like three different modulars, put them on one of our city lots, and develop our own affordable housing, which would make the state happy? Also, when this, when you do it as a city and put it on a lot, you can maintain that rent. When someone puts it on a second unit, you can't force them to pay 750 a month or to charge 750 a month, but the city, if they develop this lot, can dictate that the rent will only increase by so much per year, because this is supposed to be affordable housing. It is a need. I feel terrible for the people that need it. We have artists that live in this community, and we have people that work in the service business, and they are not finding places to rent, and they are not gonna find it with the short-term rentals. They are not gonna do it. If you could get 25 of those to be affordable, you're lucky. And not only that, those rents will keep going up. The only rents that won't go up is something that the city takes on and does, and you can partner with the state and with the federal, and they want you to do it. So I really wish they would quit trying to tie the two together. And I think we should just deal with short-term rentals as short-term rentals, and I think you should deal with affordable housing, which we need, and I would be an advocate for it, and I would go on any committee, and I will help get it done, and I wanna find out who is behind stopping it every time it's come up, because I think that's disingenuous and hypocritical to say that. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
The next card just says Anita. Is it Anita Hendricks? Okay.
Surprisingly, I just talked with, went to garage sale, and there was this woman who's been a long-term, I think she was raised here in Ojai, artist, musician, wonderful person, I don't know if anybody knows her, Danny Ma, just told me she's leaving town, going to another state, because she can't afford the housing here and just can't make a go of it. I've moved over to Miners Oaks now, partly because of an increase in rent. Also, there was a B&amp;B, more than one nearby, music light at night, one place kept their lights on all night. I could not use my bedroom, I had to sleep in, basically live in my living room. Not that all of them are like that, but I have to say, we really do have a housing crisis. We don't have enough housing. I have to take my hat up to Barbara Bowman for looking at that and, you know, putting her commitment to that. I disagree with her, I, in the fact that I do think the second units will take housing that could be used by our low-income people. But Barbara, I thank you for your interest in the issue. I would like to see also a dedicated parcel or parcels, could be tiny homes, but dedicated, because to affordable housing, low and very low-income housing, people on Section 8 repeatedly have not been able to find affordable housing in Ojai, have lost their vouchers, have not been able to get a house. People will not rent, the rents are too high. And I am concerned that if there are these tiny homes, they won't just be 750 a month, what's to keep people from going with the rate of 1,200 for a one-bedroom, very, very, not even a kitchen? You know, raising it up? These are just concerns. So, I think we really need to have something that is specifically for low-income, low-income people and very low-income people, maybe a Habitat for Humanity, working with people who can also help to build the houses or have a project like we did in the park, where wonderful community effort, people came together and built that great playground, it was a great experience, and just hoping that we come up with some really creative and alternatives that will meet our housing needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Reports from council members. Councilmember-
I just have one. Excited to report that the Ojai Valley Community Hospital got the blessing from their board, from the CMH, to go on and, and build their community, the continuing care center, which is huge for our community. I won't go into the facts, I'll go into those later, just because of our meeting, but I just wanna announce that.
Councilman Haney?
We had our first standing committee of the Libby Bowl Arts and Festival Committee this morning, and it, it was incredible. So, we're having our meetings on council days, so as we progress through them, I'll be able to speak at each council meeting regarding what we're doing, how we're doing it, and when we're doing it, so.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clapp?
I have a group of five people that have agreed to join me on a medical marijuana study group. In the interest of time, I'll just let everybody know that I'll, we're gonna, we're gonna find a time to start meeting and let everybody know, it's meant to be a core group, that it's inclusive, that everyone who's interested.
Okay. All right, the consent calendar. Yes?
I turned in a speaker card for the general session and didn't call.
Okay, I called all the speakers' cards, but you're welcome to come forward. Maybe you got, put in one of these other stacks.
It was the open session?
That's three, three, three. Go ahead, come forward.
My name's Chris Gardner, I'm a resident of the city of Ojai, and I'm the representative of PlanDon'tBan.org, the advocate group for short-term rentals. So I'm pleased to tell the council and the city that on Thursday, May 19th, two weeks after we started collecting signatures, we delivered to the city manager 874 signatures on our petition to allow and regulate short-term rentals. We validated about 600 of the signatures ourselves against the voter rolls for the city of Ojai, so we're extremely confident that we have substantially more than the 457 required to get this on the ballot in November. We collected these signatures with the help of over 40 volunteers, and you heard from one earlier, including a broad range of residents, merchants, and others who care about the issue. While they're not all here tonight, you should know that I carry their proxy. Most of our signatures were attained in a door-to-door campaign. Many of our gatherers reported an 80 to 90% signature rate. With more time, it would have been simple to collect substantially more names. Thus far, it seems clear, there's solid support in our community for this initiative. I've spoken on this topic before, saying that I was disappointed and quite frankly concerned about the process this council followed to get their decision in January to confirm a ban on short-term rentals. The council, after five years of indecision, didn't do the work, took the easy way out with a ban. You considered only the problems and challenges with short-term rentals, not any of the many advantages. This is why I've spent the time and energy to raise this petition. Unfortunately, with our efforts, my concern about the council process has only increased. First, I've reached out multiple times to council to try and work to some compromise legislation without a ballot initiative. No response. More recently, Councilmember Clapp is on record saying, better this initiative never makes it on the ballot. And then, the last council meeting, off the agenda, Councilmember Wirick said there were just a group trying to go around council to legalize illegal activity. You even leaked your heavy-handed letter from the city attorney to some of our vocal opponents. So I'm more concerned than ever about our council functions, and I'm not alone. We've heard from many of our supporters that they hesitate to go public about a variety of issues for fear of retribution from local government. To many, signing a petition is a way to send a message. So now, we have our signatures. Over the next few months, we hope to have an open discussion on the benefits and disadvantages of having well-regulated short-term rentals in the city of Ojai. And in November, the cities of Ojai will get a chance to vote yes or no on this initiative. We believe that's a good thing. Finally, with regard to two later agenda items, enforcement and compliance- Finally, with regard to two later agenda items, enforcement and compliance.
Please wrap it up. I will. Wrap it up.
I'd like to go on the record, Plan Don't Ban had nothing to do with getting these on the agenda, as is generally thought. I'll just point out ironically, the compliance program, which I fully support, is an example of this council legalizing illegal activity. Why do you have this right while several of you seem to believe the citizens of Ojai do not?
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. And I did not receive your card. I don't know what happened to it. Mr. Beam?
What's that? Oh.
Mr. Mayor, I think I'm probably not the only one that's a bit confused as to whether you're going to hear about short-term rentals now or any agenda item.
If you want to talk about anything other than the action that we have to take under item two, you're welcome to do it now. If you want to talk about the initiative, then you can talk about it now.
Craig Beam, I'm an Ojai resident. You have my information. You really need to take abatement actions now. The history of other cities, including Laguna Beach.
Mr. Beam, I think this has to do with item number two, if you're talking about our action tonight.
No, I'll talk then. I've just, you heard several speakers on the same issue, including Mr. Gardner, so I.
Heard about the initiative. If you want to address this about the initiative, the initiative alone, you're welcome to do so now.
That's what I'm here for. That's what I'm here for.
Okay.
I have 40 years' experience as a real estate attorney and was an advisor to the Real Property Section of the State Bar. Also, I've been a city attorney. This is one of the worst drafted initiatives I've ever seen. It is full of ambiguities that could cut directly against the interests of the citizens of Ojai. I mean, the starting point is that it seems to be based on the assumption that 90 units anywhere in the city would be fine with the city. Forget it could destroy neighborhoods. It has none of the land use planning or none of the zoning requirements that a city would normally have for any kind of similar use. The only major firm that I, the only, the major firm in California that uses this approach, by the way, by initiative, is Walmart. I don't think we want to subscribe to something that seems to be the game plan for Walmart, yet this is clearly it. I have to point out that your housing element, which this does not comply with, speaks directly to the need for housing for seniors and especially younger entry people into the workforce. Regardless of whether this is good zoning, it's certainly not good planning. It is not consistent with the general plan, which means it's subject to attack, is not consistent with the general plan. You've heard this from me probably four times since the first initiative came by. I'd also point out that this initiative has the weakest, if you call them existent at all, provisions for enforcement by the city in a way that you could say you revoked. It even has provisions in here that are written as if they're intended to set up a lawsuit for damages against the city if you try and revoke something, saying basically that units that are approved under this have a legal non-conforming right. If you abate a legal non-conforming right under California law, and it's not a health and safety hazard, you are going to face a lawsuit for damages. That is not by accident. That is by intentional. My comment is, this is disingenuous in its claim that somehow it helps the people of Ojai. It does not help the elderly. It does not help children. And it certainly doesn't help the city in its regulatory functions. The requirements for permit are nonexistent. The requirement for assuring it's going to be hosted of the 45 is nonexistent under existing law as it's been interpreted, as it relates to principal residences. This is full of things like this, full of them, that time and time and time again, and tend to say, oh, yes, we're going to do all these great things, which the thing says it's going to do the following. Which, by the way, the promises and the preamble of this are not part of the initiative, but doesn't deliver the goods in terms of the language. I urge this council to take action to abate non-illegal units right now. And I urge the voters to vote against this when it comes to the ballot. It is not in the city's interest.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. Okay, I'm going to move on to the consent calendar.
Move consent calendar.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Blatts.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Wirick.
Yes.
Clapp.
Yes.
All right. We don't have any public hearings this evening, but we do have, we do have three discussion items which are all important and which are going to take up time, but the very first one may be the one that's going to take the most time. And it's under the enforcement of the short-term rentals. As many of you are aware, could you shut off the clock for a moment, please, so we don't have a red light flashing? As many of you are aware, this council took an action in February that we were going to not enforce our existing ordinance. We never voted for a ban. We simply said we were going to leave our existing ordinance in place. But in due respect for the fact that some people may have had reservations, ever be it illegal reservations, that we would not start enforcement activity for four months. And that four months is up. We put this, I specifically asked that this be put on our agenda because I felt it important for the council to revisit this, knowing that there was going to be an initiative on the ballot. Now, this agenda item doesn't have anything to do with the initiative. The agenda item simply has to do with whether or not we are going to do what we had decided to do before, which was to begin the enforcement of the illegal units as of June 1st. That's it. Now, we have 22 speakers' cards, and after we hear from staff, if we have 22 speakers' cards at three minutes apiece, that means it's going to be an hour and six minutes. That's a long time. All we really need to hear from folks tonight is nothing about the initiative. We need to know whether you believe it's important for us to either suspend the enforcement longer or to do what we had said we were going to do before, and that is to just start enforcing as of June 1st. The enforcement action to start June 1st requires no further action of the council. This council will have to act if we decide that we're not going to enforce as of June 1st. So we have to consider whether we're going to change what we had already decided or whether we're going to do nothing, which would then mean that the enforcement would start by our previous action. So I'm going to ask that staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you set up the issue quite well. I don't have too much to add to that. Staff did prepare for council's consideration, three recommendations. I'll just briefly read through those. So we're asking council to discuss options for enforcement of short-term rentals, also known as vacation or transit rentals, and provide direction to staff. And the identified options include, but are certainly not limited to, maintain the direction to staff to begin enforcement on June 1st of the existing ban on short-term rentals, to include imposing administrative citations, fines, and other remedies as permitted by applicable law. Another identified option would be to extend the period of warning-only enforcement. This is what we're currently in at this point, pending the outcome of any citizen initiative efforts. Council could then choose to revisit the matter when we know for sure if any such measures will be appearing on the November 16 ballot or any future ballot, or upon certification of a vote of any such measure that does appear on a future ballot. Another option for council to consider would be you could suspend all enforcement pending the outcome of the citizen initiative efforts. And then again, council could choose to revisit that matter at some later date. Again, I think you covered the history pretty well. It was January 12th of this year when the council voted to continue the ban on short-term rentals. And then on January 26th, the council came back, adopted Resolution 1607, which confirmed the city's existing ban on short-term transit vacation rentals, and also established the fines for that. At that same meeting, subsequent motion was to start enforcement with warning letters for the next four months. Staff has, to this date, sent out several warning letters to about a dozen property owners. We've also been trying to seek information through legislative subpoenas for vacation rental data from the major vacation, short-term rental advertising websites and companies. To date, we've just received one response from HomeAway, and they have submitted several objections and have not yet provided any information. But the only thing that I wanted to mention is that a further question for the council, if it wants to consider this or give direction on this, would be whether to initiate revocation proceedings for any existing business licenses issued for vacation or short-term rental businesses. So that, again, is a bit of a side issue, but wanted to bring that to the council's attention as well tonight.
Yeah.
Many, one point to add to City Manager McCleary's points. In terms of the letters that have gone out, an update from his numbers, 17 letters have gone out, and the city's list of properties is about 33. And it's, the letters are going out by the code of compliance officer in the midst of other priorities, particularly the health and safety cases that have arisen in other properties. And that is pending your direction tonight to send the remaining of those letters out or else to do any of the other options. And as noted with regard to the legislative subpoenas, we've had one response, HomeAway, which sent a long letter, lawyerly letter, that raised a series of objections that are rooted in the federal protections for internet service providers and similar internet hosting companies. This is the, that is the moment when HomeAway and Airbnb, et cetera, contend that they're merely internet companies and are not actually vacation rental companies. And I have not responded to those, to that letter pending, again, tonight's discussion of where the council wants to go on these issues.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by the council of staff? No? Okay. Then we'll start right with the public comment. And again, I ask that you keep your comments to a minimum. I'll have the clerk still put the three minutes up, but if you can limit yourself to less than three minutes, that'd be greatly appreciated. With all these cards, we're going to be listening to each other for an hour and six minutes. All right, Roxanne Abell.
Hello, Mayor Blatts.
Hi. Welcome.
Thank you. I have been in California about 10 years. Started out in Anaheim, came up to LA, and now I'm in Ojai. I am here to be near loved ones. I've had increasing trouble finding affordable housing. I served, I'm here to share my experience. I served as a caretaker of a property that was an Airbnb rental, which I believe abused the system. I think this is what is part of the problem, yet I don't think this is what is addressed by this measure because if someone owns a property and they're actually not living on it and they're running it like a hotel and having staff and things like that, it changes the whole nature of what the Airbnb and the internet services intended it for and actually by their policies are not proper. It's supposed to be a home that someone is living in or out of town and that is occasional, that is not a business being run to do like a hotel.
All right, so are you in favor of us beginning to enforce this? Or are you in favor of us continuing to have it suspended as far as the enforcement?
I'm on the fence about it because I do believe there are people that are living in their homes, are offering the service, as we heard from a couple before, saying that, you know, this is something that helps me to be able to afford to live in Ojai. I've even thought about that myself. You know, there are concerns, but I feel like those enforceable concerns are to make sure people aren't abusing that system, not basically shutting down the system itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicki Carlton-Burn.
Good evening, Mayor, councilpeople, councilmembers. I'd just like to go on the record to say that I did make several phone calls and I've sent emails about the PowerPoint presentation to do my due diligence, to have everything here vetted and properly run and keep my presentation under three minutes, but using audiovisual aids. In the interest of time, I will table that for the time being, but I just want to go on the record to say that I'm very disappointed at the response that I got. Anyway, our family is in the business of aerial mapping, and so we deal daily with high-resolution imagery, GIS data, and other property data. So I decided to map STRs for myself in the Ojai Valley. Over the course of two weeks, I mapped 200 in the Ojai Valley, just under 200. Taken together, they represent accommodations for 950 people. Also, during the same four weeks, there were five new listings that came up. This is not something that's static. By the way, I did find 50 in the city. If you want my information, I'd be happy to share it with you. The majority of these are not the elderly making a mortgage payment. Taking the Airbnb information alone, 72 percent are whole-house rentals. When you include the other rental platforms such as VRBO and some of the personal websites that are run in Ojai, it's 78 percent. Because I looked and mapped at each property on its own separately, I have to tell you that I was dismayed and upset at how many have been purchased by investors that are empty, not providing a home for someone who wants to live in Ojai. Even though the grace period was intended to wind down legacy event bookings, many, many, many have no intention, by what I see on the internet, of abating their operations. They have continued to take bookings into June and beyond. And I'm sorry I have to speak off the cuff because this was to go with a PowerPoint presentation. In the entire Ojai Valley, there's 250 rentals that stretch from Upper Ojai on the, at the east, down to Casita Springs. Most, almost 200 are included in what would be considered the Ojai Unified School District. The reason I included those that are outside of the city limits is because they affect us also and they are contributing to the dire situation that our school system is facing. Five years ago, the decision not to enforce laws on the books has led to a present-day sense of establishment and entitlement by the STR owners. They are now acting as though their rights are being violated when for five years it is our zoning rights that have been violated. The STR proponents claim to represent 50 owners and 60 businesses. What about the other 7,300 residents of Ojai?
Please wrap it up, Vicki.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, and I will tell you, if you have a map that you would be able to distribute amongst the councilpeople, that would be great.
I don't have anything printed, and I would be happy to contact you. I believe two councilmembers have my personal contact information. I'd be happy to show. I have an interactive map.
All right. And then, are you in favor of us starting the enforcement? Or do you think we should wait?
Oh, absolutely. Without delay.
Okay. Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
Is there, you mentioned, is there any issue with Vicki providing a flash drive that the city could then take on distributing to councilmembers and to staff, the information she's compiled?
That'd be great. And if you want to make arrangements for a presentation at the beginning of one of our meetings, we could arrange that as well.
Okay.
Matthew is pressing his button.
I was going to say, with regard to the map from Ms. Carlton-Burn, if you submit it to the city manager, it can get routed to the code enforcement staff like any other code enforcement complaint.
Okay.
Albeit with a fair amount more detail that would perhaps prove helpful.
Well, if I could have a conversation, or I can contact city, but if I could have a conversation, then I can find out what form would be most useful to you.
I would suggest contacting the city manager.
I think, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Well, I'm confused. You said you had a flash drive and you called the city. What happened?
I made phone calls a couple days ago, calling two councilmembers. I was invited to present this as, in the form of audiovisual aids. And I wanted to be sure that, first of all, that I wasn't going to be wasting council time like I am now and having everything up and running, that it would be under three minutes, and that, you know, that the, basically, the hardware is going to be compatible. And then, and then I was instructed that it would probably be better to write an email, which I did email you yesterday, and four people total at the city, and I heard nothing back. So this afternoon, I called to be sure that I could come early and see that everything was running, and was told by your audiovisual man that that was not possible, that it was not to be permitted, and here we are.
Okay.
Okay. Just an aside, then. I think that in today's technology world, I think that we need to maybe broaden what is permissible from the podium for public comment because we are in that kind of world now. We've stepped beyond the traditional podium verbal. So I wouldn't, would ask council if they think it would be a good idea to bring this matter forward as an agenda item and discuss in the future allowing, whether we want to allow or not allow, the three minutes to also include somebody having audiovisual that they want to present with stipulation that it may be three minutes or under.
I concur with Councilman Clapp for future agenda.
I think that's a good idea as well. When I first heard of this particular request, I felt that because of the fact that it was going to impact a lengthier discussion, I felt, than three minutes, I felt it was best to put it at the beginning in the form of a formal presentation, and I still feel that way. But I see nothing wrong if somebody wants to limit themselves to three minutes. You can't say much, I don't think, in a PowerPoint presentation in three minutes, but there's no reason that they can't say. no reason that they can't say it with a PowerPoint presentation. So I'd be in favor of, of having it put on a future agenda.
My only concern with it is it's not the moment that they're in the room here presenting the PowerPoint. It's the work that has to be done by city staff prior to it. So if everyone in the room that's speaking tonight, 73 people, had a PowerPoint and had to come in and meet with staff, that's quite a bit of staff time taken to allow someone the opportunity to do that. So while I'm not opposed, I am, you know, we've got to think outside of that little box.
But point of order, that's a discussion of the agenda item.
Yeah.
And that's not, we're not discussing the agenda item right now.
Exactly. All we're doing right now is deciding, do we want to put it on a future agenda? Those things can be discussed then. And I'd be in favor of that. Councilman Laura?
Yes.
Okay. So do you have direction?
We will put it on a future agenda.
Clearly, okay. And as far as that prior speaker, if she wants to put forward a request for a formal presentation, she's welcome to do that as well. Kelsey Zimmerman? Hi.
Thank you for listening to me. My name's Kelsey Zimmerman. I live next door to a short-term rental house, hotel, in my residential zone neighborhood with my school-aged children and my husband. I have legal long-term rental that is occupied on my property by two community members as well. I could easily convert that to an STR. I am in the county. I know this is city, but my kids go to the city schools. It's part of the Ojai USD. But I don't, for many more reasons than I explained in three minutes. My husband and I are long-term residents of Ojai, and we're both raised here and attended public schools. My parents, as well as my in-laws, live here, as well as my three sister and brother-in-laws and their families, all grown up, raised in Ojai. I own a business that's not a tourist-based, based business as well here. When I bought my home five years ago, there wasn't even a thought that crossed my mind that two years later, we'd be living next to a hotel. Never mind, five years later, there would be 10 in my three-quarter-mile section of my street. To say these rentals on my street are party houses most of the time is a total understatement. Imagine 20 to 24 different unknown people staying every weekend. We've had aggressive people yell at myself and my children, bachelorette parties, a wedding, drug use, smoking, insane amounts of noise and profanity. The list goes on, what myself and my family are exposed to, especially my young children. There can be from 16 to 20 people renting her main house, plus two guest houses, that used to be rented to two residents of Ojai. She is making $50,000 in a bad year, up to $150,000 in a good year. This is a very lucrative and profitable business, and hotel and lodging business. Airbnb and VRBO makes it so easy for STR owners to attract short-term renters. This has changed the game. When she rents her place, she leaves her property to stay with her daughter in San Diego, which leaves us to manage and enforce the rules that she's breaking. The damage is already done by the time we call the police. By the time they are dispatched, and then the party continues after they leave, sleep is lost, and there is nothing to be gained back. Often, these are weekly rentals, which means we're affected for the work and school week. It affects our lives more than anyone could understand that does not live next to an STR. I have never heard one person say, "I'd love to live next to an STR," except possibly the short-term rental owners. The STRs have proliferated because there is no enforcement repercussions, and there is lots of money to be made. You voted as a council in January to uphold our zoning laws. You provided STR owners months to comply. In those months, STR owners were allowed to continue to operate their legal business and continue to profit, and continually in detriment to the city's residents and our schools. I implore you to enforce the law and continue, continue to support our zoning laws that you as a council decided.
Thank you. Dennis Leary?
First, I'd like to address a procedural issue. I, I wanted to speak about the initiative, and I was, wanted to get your attention, but you closed it down before I could do that. I also want to tell you what I choose on the multiple choice. But I request that I could speak about the initiative now, including it in my recommendation for the options.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Okay. The way I understand it is you've got these two groups in conflict, and I read in the paper that the city has requested a cease and desist order. That's not true?
You can comment on it, Mr. Summers.
The city sent a cease and desist letter to the initiative proponent and one of his paid signature gatherers, who were using the city's seal without permission. That is the extent of the cease and desist letters that have been sent by the city. And I'll add as a coda, both Mr. Garter and Mr. Nakka responded to that letter indicating that they had ceased and would continue to cease using the city's seal. But there was no further cease and desist letter.
And before that letter. Okay, fine. Thank you very much. Anyway, the two groups. I think that there's a sort of certain failure in our structure of communication. Something like this, I don't feel, should ever end up in the council. These matters could be solved with, with the parties in conflict. It would require some other mechanism, I think, but there's somehow, I think, in this community, when you have a conflict, there should be some means to air it out among the other people before it has to go to, to a council. Because this takes up a lot of time and money, and it just, it makes the situation worse. So, so in the courts, you have a mediation process. Hopefully, through mediation, the conflict, parties in, in conflict will come to some resolution. And then you save a lot of money and a lot of time. So I'm not sure how that could happen, but it may be something to consider in the interests of communication within the community. So, and then on, on the actual agenda item that we're talking about here, I think in view of all the, I'm not, my, my mind is not made up yet, to tell you the truth. But I think in, in view of my understanding of this, I think, option number three, I think, is the best. Just don't enforce it until, it's only a short time until the election and, and the initiative. What's, what's the sense of it? Just wait for the initiative to take place, and then you save, again, time and money. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Anita Hendrick?
Although I appreciate people's wanting to make money, I am urging you to vote to enforce the ban on the short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Starr Crabtree?
I am here tonight asking you to do what you already-
Could you lift up the mic, please, Starr?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I am asking you to do what you said you would do, and begin the enforcement actions on the violation of our existing codes. Here is the land use element in the introduction, and it states, "Ojai's character hearkens back to the traditional small town, not the modern conception of what a small-town image should be." Further, it says, "Ojai residents recognize that preservation of the community's small-town character is not a matter of chance, but requires concerted action and vigilance." And that is why I'm here. Any scenario which will require enforcement, this issue is separate from any initiative in the future. That will have its own situation. It could, there could, if it fails, the initiative doesn't pass, there could be another initiative, then another initiative. Are we just going to wait and wait and wait? Meanwhile, people like me and Kelsey are not sleeping at night, never to be regained? Nowhere in the general plan can I find anything directing you not to enforce the zoning codes. There are many of us grossly impacted by this every single weekend. Please give us a peaceful summer. Please enforce the codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Starr. Lila Francis? Hi.
Mayor Blatz. The town is currently having a very unhealthy conversation in the context of social media and in our neighborhoods. Name-calling, threatening, bullying, and hate speech. All happen because people seem unable to find common ground about short-term rentals. Let's remember as a town that we can all make a commitment with ourselves to act like respectful, educated, tolerant adults. We live in a democracy where a gift we are given is the freedom to speak out on what we believe. But this means we must all hear others and tolerate others in the same way. I tell my 12-year-old to not call other children names. I ask her to respect the difference of opinion that may emerge from time to time. Let's model for our children the behavior that we want them to emulate. The definition of democracy in Winkapedia is a system of government in which all the people of a state are involved in making decisions about its affairs. Let's hold off, and let's wait till we vote as a town, and see what the majority of our town says. Let's all remember to speak to each other, friend to friend, mother to mother, neighbor to neighbor. We deserve as a town an adult discussion where we listen to both sides. It takes a lot of courage to voice what it is, you think, what you believe. Please, councilmembers and members of the Ojai community, respond in social media and in person, at the very least, how you know that you should, not behind the mask of social media at times. It's poignant to point out that the negativity on this subject is so public, but the apologies, for example, received from another woman who always disagrees loud and vocally on Facebook with me, was sent to me as a private message. Let's even this out. Let's be brave enough to speak apologetically as well when needed in front of everyone. And let's take a moment to think before we thumbs up the hatred of another's comments. I was recently shocked on social media, when a woman told me, quote, "She was going to get me," and she was just the B-word to do it. I was more shocked that three vocal, mature, aged women actually gave her a thumbs up. This is horrific. This is not acceptable, and no one, no one should support comments like these. Let the priority defa, let, let the property-defacing end too. Let's remember Ojai's roots, the town of peace, a safe nest for all that live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lila. Rex Kochel?
I said that I wish they would hold off until the town was able to vote, so we really hear from everybody.
Rex Kochel, I'm a resident of Ojai. Actually, I turned my card in to speak earlier, and nobody called on me, so I'm speaking in this section. But, you know, I remember when complaints came from the Arbolata, that people putting fences in, and then you banned the fences in the city, or you put, you know, put serious restrictions, then you had a reaction from people all over the city of Ojai, who came in and said, "What, what are you doing?" And then you actually put a moratorium on it. And I think the issue of short-term rentals is going to go back and forth, back and forth, and I would think the best thing to do would be let it continue like it's going right now. Wait till the election happens and, and see how the community feels. My original comments were going to be that I was one of the ones that got petitions, and I went around the city of Ojai, I talked to a lot of people, and the general response was people were upset with the council, and they felt that your position was untenable. They felt like there's no reason why you can't have short-term rentals in the community, and it's beneficial to the community. Now, you have the power to regulate them and control them. So when you have somebody have, have a short-term rental in a community that's getting complaints like the people behind you, if this initiative goes through, you just license them, register them, and cut them out. They're gone. And there's a lot of people who have small places, like my wife and I have, that this, it's unsued for a family. The people next door to me say that they're glad that the person that rented it is out, and that we actually have decent civil people, couples, that come in and stay there. We also had the situation very similar to an earlier speaker, where we had a woman living in our place for three months and couldn't pay, and we were a dire economic situation, which is speaking to a lot of people that have short-term rentals. I'm not making money. I'm not, I'm trying to pay a mortgage that's over the top, and live in Ojai, and be an artist here, and have my family here in town. Without a short-term rental, I'm, I don't think we can do it. And I've talked to you about this before. So I think what I, what really should happen is the city council needs to work with the initiative, put in some regulations and rules, and monitor it. I actually thought at the end of January, the concern was you would register people and license them. You'd go around to people's places and see them, you'd make a decision on which ones fit the climate of the city and build up the city, and which ones are detrimental. The ones that I hear people talk about here, they should be gone. There's no question about it. You've got to party every weekend, and that would happen if the initiative goes through. We would have control of that. You just get rid of them. You can't continue to have a short-term rental because the neighbors are protesting every week. It's that simple. And the council has the power to do this. But I, I thought January 12th was a black day, you know, when you just simply banned it, when we were all set up to have registration and licensing. And so my point is, it's coming back to haunt you. It's coming back as an initiative. And you'd be surprised how many people in this city that I talked to thinks that you made a mistake, and that they're going to vote for the initiative, and you're going to be in a situation where you're going to flip-flop, flip-flop, just like you did on the issue of fences and, and, and that's, that's a percent of all I'd like to present to you.
Thank you, Rex. Duffy McPherson? Welcome back.
Hi, sorry for going out of, out of sequence earlier. Just to simplify it, I, I got a little conflicted after hearing everybody's speeches. To summarize, it was a unanimous vote to uphold the existing laws, to enforce the ban on short-term rentals. And now we have an initiative from a political action group who want to get it passed, and that's fine. That's the process that you need to follow. I've gone through that process myself. So the bottom line, I don't see the upside for the council to overturn their unanimous decision. I, I don't, I, I don't see any upside for the city, city council. If, if the opposition group or the pro-short-term-rental group feels that they can win the election, more power to them. But to my opinion or, or advice is to maintain the existing rules, to ban or enforce the rules against transient rentals, and make the initiative people prove that they can win the election.
Thank you, Duffy. Paul Crabtree?
Good evening, mayor and council and staff. Paul Crabtree, Kuyama wrote, "I had to ask myself, why am I coming back here again on this issue? And I found, actually found the answer in the general plan. In this box here, it says, 'Ojai community attributes' in the land use element. And it says, 'Ojai is a quiet, peaceful community, whose picturesque valley setting, architectural character, and protected natural environment combine to provide a refuge from the chaotic sprawl of the metropolitan Los Angeles area. It is a community that is first and foremost a place for people and families to live quality So I'd like to have a peaceful, quiet summer, and you could help me with that by not extending the, this, the, not extending this regulate, this ban, we'll call it, and actually enforce the, and do the enforcement actions against the people who are flaunting the zoning laws and operating short-term rentals in our single-family residential neighborhoods." Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Sean Keenan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to ask the city council, you voted unanimously in January to uphold the existing laws, laws that have been in effect since, well, since the zoning laws, about 100 years, I think. And it's not really a ban when you're enforcing laws that exist. You have underlying contracts in all of these neighborhoods. All the mortgages, all the insurance policies in these neighborhoods are predicated on those underlying laws, I think. I mean, I'm not an attorney. I would, I would ask city attorney- I mean, I'm not an attorney, I would, I would ask the city attorney his opinion on some of this, but i- if, if suddenly we change those laws and allow short-term rentals, or what I like to really term as transient rentals, in our residential neighborhoods, doesn't that change those contracts in some way or, or put them in some sort of jeopardy? I don't know, it's a valid question I'd like to ask. I think that what you should do is you should continue with what you decided to do in January and uphold those laws and enforce them. And it really isn't that difficult to enforce, because it's just four or five websites, a couple of them are private, and the rest are, you know, the usual suspects, VRBO, Airbnb. Just have people look at them and search "Ojai." If one comes up, well, there's somebody renting it. It, it isn't something that should be too difficult. And as far as waiting to see what this initiative does, well, why don't we let the initiative be voted on, and then you can decide to change the existing laws then, not continue not to enforce them now, as has been going on for the last, I don't know how long these short-term rentals have been going on. I think it's much longer than this last five years before the internet started getting involved. This is really just, the whole concept of the sharing economy, you know, I really like the idea of the sharing economy. I have problems with our system as a whole, and I'd like to see the newer ways to operate, different economics to make things fair, to make things more just. But, last time I checked, sharing didn't include the transfer of money. See, there is a website on the internet that is the sharing economy. It's called Couchsurfing.com, where you can, you can let people come in and they can stay in your house, but it's free. And no matter what you do here tonight, that's still legal. The thing that's not legal is charging money and being a de facto hotel in residential neighborhoods, and it hasn't been legal. So really, just continue with what you've done in January, and I'd like to thank you all for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Carolyn Von Driscoll?
Good evening, Mayor Blatz, and members of council and city staff. I'm here to ask you to enforce the decision you made several months ago. You've heard a lot of good community input. For me personally, it's a California Court of Appeal case that gives me really some good food for thought. The Court of Appeal was looking at a 1991 ordinance that Carmel had banning short-term rentals in residential zones, and they made three very compelling, or the court made three very compelling points. First, shutting down short-term rentals still leaves owners with several economically viable uses of their property. The only thing they may not do under this ordinance is run a transient lodging business. The intrusion into their bundle of ownership rights is minimal and is far outweighed by the public interest of enhancing and maintaining neighborhoods. Blessed with unparalleled geography, climate, beauty, and charm, Carmel naturally attracts numerous short-term visitors. It stands to reason that Carmel would wish to preserve its neighborhoods as the heart and soul of the city. Sounds an awful lot like Ojai to me. Second, when a city bans transient rentals, it does not seek entirely to ban tourists. Indeed, we suspect that tourists provide an economic boon that Carmel would be loath to eliminate. Rather, Carmel wishes simply to reasonably confine tourist accommodations. That sounds an awful lot like Ojai to me. Third, the court noted, and most compelling to me, the residential character of a neighborhood is threatened when a significant number of homes are occupied not by permanent residents but by a stream of tenants staying a weekend, a week, or even 29 days. Such rentals undoubtedly affect the essential character of a neighborhood and the stability of an, of a community. Short-term tenants have little interest in public agencies or in the welfare of the citizenry. They do not participate in local government, coach Little League, or join the hospital guild. They do not lead a scout troop, volunteer at the library, or keep an eye on an elderly neighbor. Literally, they are here today and gone tomorrow without engaging in the sort of activities that weld and strengthen a community. It is your job to weld and strengthen our community, our troop leaders, coaches, community-based businesses, community-supported nonprofit organizations, the Land Conservancy, Help of Ojai, and all the rest. Renting residents, neighborhoods, our schools, our recreation department, our hospital, dentists, doctors, dry cleaners, mom-and-pop shops, hardware stores, and all the rest that define us as a community need and expect you to enforce the law now. Any further delay by you will ensure that Ojai residents continue to be in the untenable position of having to compete with moneyed tourists for a place to live. Any further delay by you will allow the ongoing financial free-for-all that this illegal business activity has been doing in our town. Please prioritize community. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Barbara Snyder?
Hi, I'm Barbara Snyder, live down the street. I would like to congratulate the council on its adoption of Resolution 1607 confirming the city's existing ban on short-term rentals back in January. Due to the city's limited ability to enforce such rentals, banning them was the only logical decision. As you are aware, the proliferation of vacation rentals is causing great stress for those needing long-term rental housing in our town. Ojai has become a more and more desirable vacation escape, and the ease of using Airbnb, et cetera, has allowed this type of rental to grow like a cancer. You will be hearing more about the need for private homes to be used as motels. You knew in January, and you know tonight, that this use was then and is now illegal and not good for our town. I am not in favor of the proposed ban, plan, don't-ban-ballot initiative, and I urge the council to stick to your guns and begin full enforcement on June 1. Don't be bullied into non-enforcement. By enforcing this ordinance, it will show the voters of Ojai where the city stands on this issue. I believe that the voters will respect this decision and vote accordingly. And as a postscript, I'd like to say that KEYT, tonight, tonight on the news, said that Santa Barbara is sending subpoenas to Airbnb and friends, and that fines are being sent to the owners of transient rentals in the city of Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Linda Stays?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Before I begin my two-minute talk, I wanted to just say a couple things. Maybe the, the Crabtrees and the Zimmerman's might want to appeal to the county, because I believe they live in the county, so I don't think anything that you do to enforce short-term rentals would affect them tonight anyway. And with regard to what Vicki Byrne had to say about flying over to our homes, somehow that really seems like an invasion of privacy, and I, I really think you should look at that possibility before you start inspecting her flash drive or whatever she has. And about the enforcement issue, I wanted to say that we hope that council will keep in mind the statements tonight and made in this very room over the last year from numerous short-term rental owners, that they are retired and on fixed incomes and rent short-term in order to make ends meet. Ojai does face challenges with enforcing a ban on short-term rentals. This is obvious by the fact that at least six of the compliance letters that the city has sent out were addressed to the wrong owners, making it questionable how or if those who received them are required to respond. Our ordinance has a well-laid-out licensing and regulatory system which would dramatically simplify enforcement. As soon as the ordinance is enacted and the licensing program is set up, all active short-term rentals would be required to go through the application and licensing process. Then it would be obvious which, if any, short-term rentals might be operating without a license. Additionally, licensees will be required to submit their names, address, and 24-hour contact information to the city, the police department, and neighbors, so any problems or complaints could be directed immediately to the owner who lives either on-site or nearby. The license fees for this new program and revenues received from the transient occupancy tax are expected to provide more than the necessary funds for proper enforcement. The enforcement rules are strong in the ordinance, and a process has been laid out step by step, so there's no guesswork involved. The city and the licensees will know exactly how it works. I want to thank the council for this opportunity to speak tonight. I believe it is a great privilege to live in a democracy where we have the right to free speech and are allowed to petition for a ballot initiative so all the people can vote for what they believe in. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Craig Beam?
I think he spoke.
Is he still here? No? Okay. Stan Green?
My name is Stan Green. I live in this city, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and neighbors. You know, we faced a lot of threats in this community, and we've always known who the enemy was. It was usually a county agency or somebody else, like a big corporation, that wanted to pollute our air. Now we have a threat that's not external, it's internal, and we don't know what to do with that. So, I think we're looking at what the proponents have said, is that they brag about having a lot of money, and that money is what pays for the half-page ads, and it also pays for the signature gathering, and it pays for all of the advertising for new council members that want to run that may be in agreement with the proponents of overnight rentals. So what are we doing? We're putting transient occupancy ahead of residents in terms of preference. There are negative effects having to do with our schools and the effect on services, like keeping doctors, hospitals, dentists, therapists, all available, 'cause people who come in overnight, they don't use our doctors or anybody unless there's an emergency, but they go home, they go to their doctor or dentist. So, we won't have a community. What I'm concerned about is that what we will have is a concerted effort and the money being spent to get new people who agree with their way of doing business to be running the city, and they're threatening, I think they're basically threatening that that's what they'll do. So, we're putting occupancy ahead of residents, even though there's a negative effect of that. What this is all about is money. This is about money and not community. If we forget that we've got a community, and the reason that people visit here and say, "Gee, I wish where I lived was like this," is because we've made it that way. We've made it attractive, we've made it desirable, and so this is going to be a self-destructive process. The self-destructive process is when you don't have a community that people want to visit or stay at, all of this overnight rental will go away, there won't be any. So, I'm just gonna say this once or twice, it is about money and not community. This town, our Ojai, is not for sale.
Thank you, Stan.
Not for sale.
Thank you. Judy Murphy?
Judy Murphy, resident of Ojai. As we speak here tonight, apartments and houses are being converted into short-term rentals. Now, you have seen me speak to you before over the last three years as part of an affordable housing committee. We have been trying to address the problem of a lack of affordable housing in Ojai, with all of the negative impacts that, that that has on our community. We have a limited number of houses, apartments, and dwelling units in this town. Almost none of them are affordable. However, the trend line is that they will become less and less affordable if we keep removing stock from our inventory. This has made it really hard for families to live in Ojai, and as everyone talks about it, that's what our community needs. So I, I urge you tonight to enforce the law. I don't want a mini hotel next to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Steve Qualisi?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. First, I want to say that, in full disclosure, I signed a petition, because I would like to see this question on the ballot. Second, I have no dog in this fight. My property is zoned R-01. I understand from city statistics that the average size of a lot is one and a half acres in that zoning. Ours is less than half that. On our street, we have two long-term rentals and used to have at least one short-term rental. But the lots are all large enough that none of those bother any of us, and so I would, I would ask that you think about saying, not that short-term rentals are barred in all residential areas, but make some differentiation between 50-by-150 lots, or whatever the size is, say, a Long Ground or Fulton, and R-01 lots or larger lots where you in fact allow second or even third units on the property, but now you don't want them to be short-term I think, and this is just personal opinion, that the council's decision in January was in response to a vocal group within the community that is opposed to short-term rentals. I'm not taking a position on short-term rentals, but I think the existence of the petition at least allows for the contention that there may be a larger, albeit less vocal, group within the city that would like to see short-term rentals here. And, and so I think we're gonna see this on the November ballot, and I think that we should all abide by that when it comes up, because it is according to state law that we have this. In the meantime, I think that it's, I, I, my personal opinion is the, the initiative is going to pass, but I don't know, obviously. I think that it would be better if the council did not continue the enforcement by warning for the next seven months, or whatever six months that it is, because that's just extra work for staff. I think it would be better to suspend enforcement until you see the results of the election. And one of the other things, I, besides looking at different residential areas, I think it would be good to require that any short-term rentals be owned by a resident of the city who lives in the city. I think one of the things that we've found here is that people are frustrated with short-term rentals when it appears there's no one to complain to other than the police. That's not a good situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Qualisi. Chris Ilgers?
Mr. Mayor, city council, to answer the earlier query from Dennis Leary, the answer is unassisted self-preservation. And what I'd like to say tonight is, I, I want you to vote for enforcement, and my, my stake in the game is that, when I bought our house from a long-term rental years ago, so did Chet and Melanie, and so did my daughter and Jerry. And one of the people that's working for us, of course, as you know, is Casey. He has the clutch out all, all the way to, so to speak. He has three people already hired and working for him. And he said to me the other day, "I'll never be able to buy a house in town if the short-term rentals go into effect, because there won't be anything available for me." And so I'm speaking to the issue of, I would like to see it enforced, and I would think that, I would think that it will change the essence and the ambiance of the town forever, which will not be returned. The reason people come here is because it's a small town, and there are people here that want to... want to volunteer and be part of the town, as our family has been. And this will destroy a lot of these people, because those people will not be available anymore for the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, all the volunteer things that go on in the town, because that segment of the population is removed, because my brother has seen it going around the country, and these people are forced out, and they move, they live in other areas, and the ambiance of the town changes forever, and I would be sad to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Wendy Hilgers?
I hope that you will begin-
Could you move the mic down, Wendy, please?
Oh, I thought it was pretty loud.
Yeah, no, that's good.
I hope that you will begin to enforce the ban, and I was just dumbfounded when I heard earlier, I'm practically speechless to hear, that for personal financial gain, some citizens in the community can vote to take away the rights of the other citizens. A person who buys a home in a community like Ojai, that's the biggest investment in their life, and we've been lucky enough to be here since 1969. And the house where we live since 1976, we have seen generations come and go, the same people on our street, and it's just been unbelievable. And that is going to change completely, as we've seen so many other cities change. Now, big cities too have stopped the vacation rentals or put severe restrictions on them. It can certainly be done. Ojai is so small, and it won't take many vacation rental homes to completely destroy what we all love in this city. And I think Carolyn Von Duska's letter was just wonderful. Of course, I agree so much with my husband. And I just had this one little quote from Manhattan Beach. "The citizens of Manhattan Beach said that allowing rentals of less than 30 days was not worth changing the character of the city." And they voted against the vacation rentals. And that's a huge vacation community, as many other cities are. So I hope that you will begin to enforce the ban with great seriousness. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Sabrina Venskus?
My name is Sabrina Venskus. I own property and live in the city of Ojai on Drown Avenue. I am an advocate of affordable housing, therefore I'm an advocate of enforcing the zoning code. The zoning code outlawed short-term rentals. This council, I urge you strongly to move forward with enforcing it. I have a rental on my property. There's two houses. I live in one with my daughter, and I rent to a long-term resident on the property. If short-term rentals were legal, I could make a lot more money. But to me, it's more important to have a strong, tight-knit community with long-term renters that can afford housing. So therefore, I'm an advocate of having no short-term rentals allowed in the city. So I feel confident also that this initiative will be voted down by the voters of Ojai, because I think the voters of Ojai are intelligent, caring people overall, that want to see their community stay intact. So I just, again, want to encourage you, please enforce the ban. I want to give you one really quick story about my experience of renting my little cottage in the back of my property. It was very disturbing the day that I had my open house. I put the open house on Craigslist, and I had probably before the open house even started, I had maybe 25, 30 people lined up at my gate. I had families with children that were willing to rent my cottage, my one-room cottage, because they could not find a place to rent in Ojai. They were willing to put their children in a one-room cottage with them, the parents, because that's how desperate they were. We cannot allow our community to be torn up like this, because some people want to make more of a profit than others. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Pat McPherson?
Mayor Blatts, and members of the council. The issue before you tonight is really simple. It's not nearly as complicated as everybody wants to present it. A law's been on the books for over 80 years, and it doesn't allow short-term rentals. The city council has spent time, resources, and had a community forum, and on that basis made a decision, and voted unanimously to enforce the 80-plus-year-old laws, starting June 1st. After all of that work, time, money, deliberations, arguments, and so on, the residential zone hotel brokers, I call them, and their Airbnb advisors have launched a PR campaign and a voter initiative, with the intent of passing an initiative to overturn the 80-year-old laws. If you decide not to enforce these 80-year-old laws, a lot of negative actions can occur, because the initiative will not be settled in November election, resulting in expected lengthy delays in courts. And that is, I believe, to be a fact. Also, they're relying on you tonight to put enforcement on hold as a way to indirectly link the city in support of the initiative. This is a real problem. The job for the council is to be impartial to the community as a whole. Anything else would be give the impression that the city supports the initiative. In addition, by not enforcing the existing law, the city will allow those that have been breaking the law to continue, which is what they want, and will even encourage more to do it. And the citizens will have no way to complain. The actions of the city council tonight is simple: uphold the existing law that has been here for over 80 years, steer, stay clear of the initiative process, and let the chain, or let the, excuse me, let the chips fall as they may. If it happens, it happens, but don't get involved in it, because if you do, it's looking not real good for the city. Again, I voted for each of you, because I trust that all of you share the same values I have for Ojai. And it's not an easy decision, but I ask that you support your decision you made earlier and enforce the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Tom Francis?
Good evening, Mayor Blatts and council members. I just want to start by saying, I really appreciate all the effort that you all put in to make Ojai a great place for all of us to live. You know, I think it's a somewhat thankless task sometimes, but anyway. My family owns residential rental properties that rented for a reasonable amount to residents that live there for the long term. We enjoy an adequate return on the investment of time and money we put into purchasing and caring for these homes. We need not go for blood. Transitioning from lucrative, long-term home rentals into the cutthroat, short-term rental business is going for blood. Participating in creation of a dynamic where long-term residents find themselves competing with money tourists for a place to live is plain wrong. So my family decided not to do that. We had many friends that did it. They were encouraging us to do it. They said we would make more money. We decided not to do it. I believe that those that are engaging in this practice have simply misplaced their moral compass. I invite them to rediscover their compass, let go of the greed, and get back on track. I want to acknowledge the fact that short-term rentals do help a few people in our community make ends meet. This is true. In my mind, this is the upside of Airbnb. Unfortunately, the downside is that for every person it helps, there are many more that are hurt. Therefore, for the larger community of Ojai, Airbnb has created a net loss. Airbnb significantly reduces the number of homes available to renters, and by extension, increases rents. Less homes available means higher rents. This is the basic, indisputable fact of supply and demand. In fact, if my family's sole interest was maximizing the financial return on our property investments, regardless of how we impacted the community, I would be arguing in favor of short-term rentals tonight. I encourage those of you that are here tonight and in favor of short-term rentals to reevaluate your position with the larger community in mind. Mayor Blatts, my understanding is that you are for creating more affordable housing opportunities for people to live in Ojai. Tonight you have before you the biggest opportunity to protect housing affordability in Ojai you will likely ever encounter. I strongly urge you, and the entire council, to take the important step of saying yes to the community and no to greed, by directing city staff to put an end to home hotels that benefit a chosen few while hurting Ojai renters. Doing this will immediately create dozens of home-sharing and renting opportunities for the many people that can't find a place to live in Ojai. Sometimes ideas that start out good for the community get exploited to the point of no return. The internet-based residential lodging business is one of them. Rampant greed has definitely arrived. Please enforce Ojai's equitable zoning rules that have stood the test of time for a reason. Airbnb in Ojai, an idea whose time has passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Stacy Jones?
I'm Stacy Jones. Please enforce the ban. I've lived in the Ojai Valley since 1985 and began my business, Ojai Coffee Roast.
Excuse me, Stacy.
Yes.
Could you pull your mic down, please? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Can you hear me now? My three children have grown up here all their lives, and they attend school in the Ojai Unified School District. As of 2013, I began renting homes after selling my home of 15 years. That is when my kids and I embarked on the journey of finding a rental. I was very much unaware of the rental market and found out quickly the difficulty in finding an affordable home to rent, and that it seemed that there was always a multitude of families ahead of me. The process of unveiling my personal information to so many is amazingly stressful, but necessary, understandable, sometimes filling out applications that were as thick as if I were purchasing the home. The waiting, the calling, and finding out that there were so many ahead of me, first come, first served, and the first home we did rent, I literally found on the local rental list, a home more expensive than I could afford, but knew it had been on there for a year, so I rented it. I have since left that home. It is now a VRBO. I left because the landlord had little regard for the drought we are in. Crossed out a couple paragraphs, because I want to get all this. "It seemed that I was running into the same situation over and over. Everyone in the situation for looking for a rental was experiencing the same brick wall. The situation became competitive. Friends who were looking would keep hush about a prospective rental, so that there would be less competition. Asking friends, acquaintances, customers, vendors, realtors if they knew of anything coming up was almost futile, because so many were asking for the same consideration. When I finally found a place to live that was more expensive, but in Miners Oaks where water is less expensive, it was quite an ordeal. A friend saw the homeowner putting up a "for lease" sign, took the number, I called, left work, went over another application, was in line to hear whether I would be the lucky one. Ultimately, won! That is the mentality of a renter anymore." I wrote in the Ojai Community Network on Facebook, a plea to owners of homes to consider the same thing I had asked the acquaintance previously, which was a paragraph I crossed out not to read, but it was that I had asked this person, I have 40 seconds left. It was, "I bequeath to you VRBOs, STRs, whatever you guys are called, I'm not really sure, to consider giving up your status as VRBOs, et cetera, and consider local families who want to remain in Ojai, who want to shop Ojai, who want to keep their children in the Ojai Unified, whereby the landlord would receive solid rent, thinking it would be less stressful for them, they could lose their property managers, keep families in Ojai who live and work here." There ensued hundreds of responses, this is on Facebook, social media, from people like me in my situation. My plea was not to bash, but to ask. More recently, I was approached at my business, please give me a few more. This is-
Please wrap it up, Stacy.
I was recently approached at my business to join in the petition going around. The business owner claimed that without VRBOs and the like, businesses would lose money, because Ojai would lose visitors, tourists. I was in no position to speak. He came back to sit down. When I told him that I was not, that I was a renter in the same situation that he was talking about, he was clearly upset with me. Within a few weeks, another owner, a little more abruptly, came to discuss the situation. I wasn't able to talk to him immediately, but I did reach out, and he iterated that he found out after he had left that I was against the VRB owners, and that I would be hurting other businesses by not getting on board with his constituency. He left agitated. More recently, I was approached by another business owner-
Please, please wrap it up. It's not fair to other people that stayed within the three minutes, Stacy. So please wrap it up. If not, I'm going to stop you.
Done.
Marcy Tasher?
I have the letter, a letter from Beverly and Archie Park Sherbo. They live in the city of Ojai, 909 Foothill Road, right next door to 1001 Foothill Road, the historical Libby Gate House, which is being used as a transient rental by absentee LA owners. "On Tuesday, May 24th, you are scheduled to hear and decide whether the community of Ojai will continue to enforce our zoning laws banning illegal short-term rentals that have inundated our neighborhoods. When we read this week's council agenda, we were dismayed to see that your January 16th decision to start enforcing the law banning STRs on June 1st was in jeopardy. And continuing a non-enforcement policy of our zoning laws was an actual option. If you do intend to extend the enforcement procedures of our zoning laws to stop the illegal short-term rentals in our neighborhood, or even worse, you intend on changing our zoning laws, these are our concerns. To our family, allowing these illegal businesses to continue to inundate our neighborhood is a community policy question that threatens the varied fiber of our city. We will not address this threat at this time, because many other people will talk about it. We want to explain to you how our life is affected by your decision to allow an illegal STR to conduct business next door to our home. We have experienced a great deal of intrusion and stress due to these businesses that the city council has allowed to proliferate throughout our community. Several times, we have been forced to wait up late at night. We wanted to call the police because of the noise, and swearing, and partying, but we also wanted to be tolerant neighbors. We also feared the unknown consequences of what police involvement might bring, so we just waited for the renters to finally go to bed. One time at 2:00 AM, we did call the police to stop the disturbance by the renters. We sat there in bed, listening to them continue to laugh, and scream, and swear, for at least an hour, before suddenly everything went quiet. We thought, did the police arrive? Did the renters go to bed? Were the police going to come to our door? Were the renters going to come to our door, because we called the police? You cannot imagine how traumatic it can be, waiting for the police to arrive. And even more traumatic when you think they are gone. We felt like hostages in our home. What was going to happen next? What was going to happen tomorrow? Or the next time they rent their house out to strangers? What can we do to never go through this again? We felt powerless. And in January, when the city reaffirmed our laws disallowing short-term rental businesses in our residential neighborhoods, we felt such relief. Now we are going to be protected, we thought. Now these businesses could be stopped, and we could enjoy our home and feel safe. Today, we are shocked even think that the city might actually continue to fail to enforce the closure of these illegal businesses. What can we say to make you understand that our zoning laws are protection laws made to protect us, and we depend on you to enforce them? Continuing harm to my family are you creating by forcing us to be the ones enforcing the law? We are not trained as enforcers to deal with potential explosive situations, or to confront strangers who could be dangerous, protect my family by making and enforcing laws that disallow all short-term rentals. Thank you for your consideration. Beverly and Archie Park Sherbo, city residents and voters."
Thank you, Marcy. Bill Miley?
I'm Bill Miley, North Signal Street. We've lived there a long time, since 1968, and I'm going to use an electronic version to speak to you tonight. My position is to enforce the ordinance prohibiting short-term rentals in Ojai, especially in residential zones. My thinking and reasons are: fact, the city's second unit compliance guidelines prohibit use of legalized- use of legalized units for short-term vacation rentals. We reaffirmed that and adopted it on March 8th this year by resolution. Fact, the Short-Term Rental Initiative, if passed, will approve such rentals. Quote, "Short-term rentals will be permissible in a legal unit in the applicable zones, including second units legalized through the Second Dwelling Unit Compliance Program," end quote. Fact, the city's fifth housing element, 214 to 221, and fourth housing element, both included compliance program units for meeting affordable housing numbers. So, in my opinion, if one or more of the previously non-legal units became legal through the Second Unit Compliance Program and through the initiative was used as a short-term rental, in my opinion, it would violate the state legally-approved housing element, our housing element, and our general plan. We can't let that happen. It seems the initiative has overstepped the boundaries of state law and regulation. It's placing, in my opinion, the city's general plan in jeopardy and challenges the state approval of the Ojai City's housing element. I want to encourage this council to move ahead with the total ban enforcement. Reasons in summary. One, it reaffirms the value position of many of us, keeping residential zones residential, preventing them from becoming sources of business income, and from hollowing out residential living areas. Two, the reason is that, in my opinion, the Short-Term Rental Initiative probably violates state law and potentially converts affordable second units to short-term rentals, which can be used as housing for a vulnerable class of people. Thus, the city council's action to enforce will show the California State Department of Housing and Community Development that our housing plan is real and that we intend to meet state housing laws and policies and we intend to help people in need. I urge you to enforce it now. And as far as what the election is going to show in November, this community, this city voted 87% to kick out Golden State because we value a better way of running our water system. I believe those steep values will also show, and they will vote in a great majority, to reject this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for all your comments. I don't have any more speakers' cards on this agenda item. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Dale?
I just want to say that I do support the enforcement starting June 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll beat you.
Oh, hey. Brian?
Just real briefly, I'm Kevin Ruff. As you know, I'm a member of your school board. We have two things that are in scarce supply in Ojai, water and children. And anything you can do that would encourage families to be here, you know, our school district is in a, you know, a sort of crisis right now. And if you could socially engineer, you know, you might take steps to encourage more families, but you don't even have to do that. All you have to do is enforce the law.
Thank you, Kevin. Chet?
Good evening, council. Good to see Kevin. Enforce the law. I mean, it's pretty basic. It's against the law, zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Yes, Leslie Ferraro, I live on Eucalyptus, and same thing, enforce the ban. It's a ban, it just needs to be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine?
Ditto.
Okay. Anyone else?
Force the law.
Okay. All right, I'm going to bring it back to council. Councilwoman Clapp, comments?
You know, whenever there's a real controversy like this, and we have a lot of public comment, I think it's really important, when people come forward, that I keep a tally. And the tally is for the, I did undecided, enforced, and don't enforce. There were two undecideds, there were 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 don't enforces, and there were 5, 10, 15, 20, 29 pro-enforcement. I just wanted to give that little statistic out because I think that's very important for council to consider.
Okay. Councilman Lara?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Blatz, and thank you all for coming and stating your position. First off, I, getting back to what the agenda is and the recommendation, I, my understanding then is that the mayor suggested possibly waiting enforcement until this initiative was put on the balance sheet with the voters. But in my mind, they're two separate processes. The council has definitely taken over a year to vet this issue, and in my opinion, we took a lot of public comment during that 14-month process about getting an opinion, putting an ad hoc committee together, weighing the pros and the cons. And to all due respect to Mr. Quilless, he had disagreed with his assessment of what we determined in January 12th. I think as a responsible elected official, you weigh those comments and you try to be impartial in regards to what your duty is and your responsibility is. And without getting into too much detail about the pros and the cons, it comes down to our general plan and to our zoning laws. And as elected official, those pros of having vacation rental did not come near to the cons that it would, the negative effects that would impact our zoning laws. And as elected official, I can't support that. And I, I'm still in favor of enforcing our existing zoning laws, not, it's not a ban, it's enforcing our existing zoning laws. I just want to make sure that's clear to the public. In regards to the initiative, that's going to be its own process. I respect the fact that the people want to put an initiative in the ballot. I'm not stating for or against it. But as elected official, I want to maintain the direction to staff and begin enforcement on June 1st. That's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Haney?
You know, this brings up a lot of the same memories of watching a divided community that we went through last year, you know, through January, and I, you know, again, I, it just bothers me, the fact that we can't figure this out as a community. And I don't know, again, we went through the process and I don't know how to bridge that. So, you know, I met with a gentleman last week, Stan Green, I'll say who it was, Stan's a good guy. And, you know, him and I spent about an hour and a half and we talked about community. And, you know, for, a big part of me doesn't have a sense that the vacation rentals are going to have a negative or an adverse effect on the community. And I fought for that originally in the beginning, but when Stan and I were talking about community, it brought up, it brought up a moment in my life when, it was about five, six years ago, and we were, it's a short story and I'll get to it quickly. We were adding a roof onto our garage, a pitched roof versus a flat roof. And it was the middle of May, and I'd actually stripped the entire roof down because we were going to do the whole roof, the house and the garage at the same time. And we put plastic up in the event we might get rain or something of that nature. And ultimately, with the wisdom that I've demonstrated on council, and the wisdom that my wife has married me for, I took the plastic off. And in the middle of May, on a bright sunny day, thunderclouds rolled in and flooded my roof, my house, and my world. And what was interesting is when Stan and I were talking, you know, again, I'm weighing the pros and the cons, and I'm trying to really digest all of the different feelings that we have in this community regarding this issue. And it just kept playing back in my mind what happened that day. And what happened is, I needed help. I needed help to recover my roof. And so I went across the street to my neighbor, John, and he's a 65-year-old man with emphysema and probably wasn't the guy that should be up on our roof at that time with me, and he did. And him and I stood up there, I should say, he watched me as I climbed, not walked, but climbed and crawled over my roof to put the plastic on. And then ultimately, we came down and I went back inside the house, but the plastic didn't work, and the damage had been done. And as I stood in the middle of my house, and I could see every room except the bedrooms, and there's water wicking through my ceiling. At that point in time, I had two thoughts. First of all, what the hell have I done? And how the hell am I going to tell my wife what I'd done? At that moment, who walks through my door? John and Marcia? Kathy and Jean? My neighbors? And they helped me mop up this mess. They helped, they consoled me. I mean, seriously, I was, it was sad. And we did the best we could. Now, two houses down from John is a vacation rental today. And this is what drove community home, and this is what has really, really made me think about community deeper than I ever had. There was no one in that house that I could have went to and asked to help. There's no neighbor there anymore. And when Stan and I were talking, that story just came back and just kept playing over and over and over again. And what does community do us? And community is having neighbors that are there when you need them. Community is having a sense that if something good or something bad is happening, you've got someone that has your back, someone that you can trust, someone that you can talk to. And that's what, that's where I am today. So, Stan, thank you for the time and the opportunity. You have a tremendous amount of wisdom. And like Councilman Savara said, the initiative is going to play out, and the community is going to have a vote, and the community is going to have a say. And I'm going to stand behind that as a councilperson and as an individual. But I will, I will say this, that we have a great community. We have a strong community, and we can't lose sight of that.
Thank you, Councilman Haney. Mayor Portem Lyric?
My goodness. How can I follow that? I can only follow that by going after a whole different approach. Very eloquent, thank you, Councilman. Where I'm coming from is this, that we don't, we've been through a process. In fact, this community has been through decades of a process. We have a plan. It's called the general plan, it's called the zoning code. Multiple sets of elected officials, a long history. That's our plan. That's our law. The general plan is our constitution, the zoning code is our law. And we've been through the debates and will probably continue to have a debate about how to differentiate different kinds of short-term rentals. Can it be enforced? Can it be regulated so it doesn't impact the community? But none of that is before us tonight. What's before us tonight is that we made a promise to the community, not really just in January, but before that, we said, you know what, we're just going to, we're going to, we're not going to change the zoning code. That was back in the fall, in the winter. It's been six months that the community has basically been on notice that we're going to not change the zoning code right now, that maybe there'll be a future process that we do it, but we're not going to do it. We just, we've decided, we've decided. And so we have a plan. We need to enforce the laws until we change the laws. And, I mean, it really just comes down to that. And so I just think that we have no choice in terms of our credibility, in terms of being consistent with our general plan, in terms of our oath of office to start enforcing.
Councilwoman Clapp?
Yes, you just took the words out of my mouth because when we are sworn in, we swore, we swore that we would uphold the law. And this is the law. The initiative process, Savaro stated very well, that is another issue, and that will play out. If it plays out, then we take up the matter again, if necessary or whatever. Interestingly enough, the city of Berlin has put a $100,000 fine on anybody that starts a vacation rental. This is not just isolated here in this community. This has become an international problem. And we're seeing it play out in real time here, and we're seeing how it's dividing our community. But I think right now, we need to let things play out with the initiative process, and in the meantime, do what we swore to do as city council members, which is uphold our laws. So I believe that we should enforce.
And one amplifying comment, the initiative process is a process of changing the law. And so, you know, I, you know, if that's what the community decides, that will be our new law. And, but right, but that, you know, we need to go from following the law until it's changed, and that, that's what the initiative process is. The community will make a decision, and all of us will express ourselves about this particular initiative and in the future, the general issue. And that's how it should happen. It shouldn't be, we don't follow the law until we change it, it should be, we follow the law until we change it. Thank you.
I want to reiterate that the reason that this item was put back on the agenda for tonight was only because I felt that, because since we had made our decision in January, which was to maintain the existing zoning code and uphold the zoning code, that there had been initiative that had been circulated, and I wanted to see if, based on that initiative, any of my colleagues wished to readdress the issue. I also wanted to find out if there was input from the public that we needed to be aware of before we began to enforce it. It wasn't put on the agenda for any other reason than that. And I can tell you that as a sworn official of the city of Ojai, I know that we have code, we have the zoning code in place, and we are obligated, which we have decided that we're going to leave the zoning code in place, as city officials, we're obligated to enforce it. And I believe that's what we need to do now. I also believe that our decision that was unanimous in January was an important decision for our community. And I think it's best that we don't have short-term rentals. And I think it's best because it is so critical as to the health of our neighborhoods. And I don't think that people that look at this issue truly understand that how easily what we cherish in this town can be lost. And once it's lost, you can't get it back. So, as a public official sworn in to uphold the laws, I don't think we have a choice, to tell you the truth, and I didn't even when I put it on the agenda. But I felt an obligation to our community and to my colleagues to do that. So I certainly think we should begin enforcement on June 1st. So, do you need to have a, do you need to have further direction in terms of which one of these three options you want to have? Or do we just say, we've already made the decision, and the decision was to start forcing it in June, and we're not going to change that decision?
That would be the first option, which would be to maintain the direction to staff to begin enforcement on June 1st of the existing ban on short-term rentals, to include imposing administration, administrative citations, fines, and other remedies as permitted by applicable law.
Okay, but do you need a motion on that, or do you already have authority to do that?
I think it'd be good to have a motion because we're also, one of the directions that the council made back in January, and I'm sorry, I was not aware of this during the transition, was that council had directed to bring back a report in two months on the broader enforcement of the short-term rentals. As we noted in the staff report, if council wants to continue with that, that we would like to come back on June 14th with the plan for the full enforcement efforts, if that's council's desire, including the imposition of fines and penalties. That would be a comprehensive enforcement plan for discussion for council.
Okay, thank you.
We could have that back by June 14th at the next regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd be happy to make a motion, but also I would like to, within the motion, direct staff to do, as you said, come back with enforcement mechanisms and fines, within that discussion of potentially raising the maximum fine within the municipal code. And I'd like to know how, have you report back how you do that, what process you would take to change the maximum amount of fine allowable within the municipal code. So would that need to be in the motion, or what would be the best way to do that? Or do them separate? Or do them separate?
My suggestion would be a motion to confirm the existing direction by the council in January to begin enforcement efforts of the vacation rental, short-term rental ban as of June 1st, with direction to bring a comprehensive enforcement plan to include a discussion of options to increase the maximum fine.
Yeah, you know, I'm sorry.
At the next meeting.
It's basically, it's basically within that first suggestion. So I will, I will move to maintain the direction to staff to begin enforcement on June 1 of the existing ban. I don't, I would like to strike the term ban, the existing, um...
Laws.
Clause, thank you, because it's not a ban. Clause in our municipal code on short-term, on, I see, I don't like how this is worded. Maybe you could help me with this, because we, we don't really have an existing clause on short-term rentals within the city.
If I could offer some language?
Yes, please.
Maintain the direction to staff to begin enforcement on June 1st of the zoning code's existing provisions regarding short-term and vacation rentals.
Yeah, that. To include imposing administrative citations, fines, and other remedies as permitted by applicable law.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion by the council? Roll call, please.
Blatts?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Laura, sorry.
All right, thank you for all your input from the public.
A couple of things that, little danglings in this agenda item I'd like to bring up.
Okay.
Number first and foremost, question of city attorney. If we do legislative subpoenas, and they're not responded to, is there a process of default judgment in?
So, I'm happy to speak to that. What, the power to enforce a legislative subpoena is to make a motion to the court to have the sheriff collect the person to whom it was directed. The hitch is that that sheriff's power only extends within the county. There is no HomeAway or Airbnb office that I'm aware of in the county. However, there is a step two, which is the owners and the renters tend to live in the city, or at least be in the city, or if not live here, then own property here, thus come into the city. The sheriff does have power over them. So the next step would be subpoenas against the individual homeowners and property owners who are renting illegally. With regard to the information from the internet companies, the largest cities have had success in forcing them to come to the table through mostly litigation threats. I'm thinking mostly of Santa Monica and San Francisco, which forced Airbnb to come to the table and produce the data, in part because those two cities are a not insignificant portion of Airbnb's global revenue. Ojai is too small to have that leverage.
What about Malibu?
Malibu, I believe, cut a deal with Airbnb that was tied to, in fact, I spoke to their council the other day. They cut a deal with them that was, we're going to regulate but not ban, so give us the data. We may have a harder time cutting that deal with, with Airbnb.
I'm not asking any direction, I'm not suggesting that we give any direction, I just wanted information.
Certainly.
Okay. And one other dangling issue, if I may. It's the issue of any existing licenses tied to collecting TOT that are in, in a violation of the city's municipal code. It's in here about whether, in terms of direction with respect to that licensing, if, to what extent it exists. You're, I assume the city manager or you, as the city attorney, want direction from us on that?
Exactly. And on that, the question before the council would be, as you'll recall from your history lessons, Al Capone was captured on tax evasion, not the underlying crimes. The same thing is true here.
Interesting.
Whether or not, whether or not the activity is legal, as it is currently, it's illegal, the initial notwithstanding, that doesn't, that isn't law yet, the tax is still owed. The council has the power to demand tax on the illegal activity, or to let it go, stop collecting tax, rescind those licenses. That's a choice for the council. I'll note that some cities have had success in using the back TOT as leverage to say, we're going to fine you for the activity you've done of late that we can prove. Further, we're going to subpoena your records and demand three years of back TOT. Then you use, you have that as your initial demand, then you relax that price, come to a deal in which they agree in a contract to stop the activity that then becomes enforceable itself.
I'm just going to express my personal opinion really quickly. I am very troubled with the city collecting TOT for illegal activity. I don't want to collect it.
Fair.
Okay? And I, I just think that it's wrong. We've, we've had a clear direction, and, and that's it. I also think that, that any licenses associated with the collection of that TOT should no longer exist.
What is the sense of the rest of the council?
Um, I would agree with that. I think any license, we don't have a license for it, so I don't even understand why we're collecting TOT. So I agree with Councilwoman Lyric that we need to cease collecting TOT and revoke any license that has been given.
I think the reference to licenses is to business licenses, which are independent of the TOT.
Yes, yes, a business license. Because I don't believe that there's a business license to operate a short-term rental. So it's being operated probably under some other license, which is really not accurate as to what's going on. So I would say that it'd probably be a good idea to also take the license that is associated with that rental and, and remove it. Because I believe there's one, one vacation rental.
I'm aware of at least one vacation rental that has a business license. Revocation proceedings can begin. Given that that is a license granted by the city, procedural due process attaches. Revoking a business license requires notice and an opportunity for the person to respond. We'll start that process. But we haven't heard yet from the rest of the council.
Yeah. Councilwoman Laura?
I agree.
Okay. Councilwoman Haney?
I just, um, I just want to make sure that the actions that we take as a community are not punitive, that they're just within the guidelines of the recommended fines or procedures that we have on the books. Any talk or any action that's going to be punitive is just not what we should be as a council and what we should not be as a community. So anytime I hear it, or I think I hear it in someone's voice from, from up here, it sickens me. It just sickens me. All right? We're going to follow the guidelines, we're going to follow the rules, but whatever actions we take are not going to be punitive.
Yeah. I have a question for Mr. Summers. There is an existing, I guess, I'm hearing that there's, there is an existing license to operate a short-term rental within the city, and that person has been paying transient occupancy tax?
I think there's a couple of facts being conflated in this discussion. There is at least one short-term rental that exists pursuant to a CUP that was, a conditional use permit that was previously granted. That is grandfathered in because we approved a CUP.
All right.
They can continue the use, they still owe the TOT, and they should be paying it if they aren't.
Okay.
And they should have a business license for that.
Okay.
That is one. There are others, at least one, that do not have a CUP, thus the land use is illegal, that have been issued a business license and that are paying TOT. Those are illegal, and the tax is still owed. I'm hearing the council's direction to cease collecting the tax and begin revocation proceedings for those business licenses. The key is that a business license is not a license to operate a business, is not a license to have a business. Business license is a certificate, a taxation certificate.
Okay. Mr. Livingston, do you have something to offer?
A little point of clarification. To my knowledge, my understanding, and for those who don't know, I'm the finance director for the city, and, and the TOT and the business license are both under my direction here with the city. But my knowledge is that there is one operator that has a business license, one operator that, and that operator does collect TOT and remit TOT to the city. I am not aware of any other of these, these operations that has a current business license.
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, thank you. I think then the direction you have is that obviously we can't do anything with the person that's been issued a CUP and is operating legally. But if there's anybody else that's operating under a business license that doesn't permit short-term rentals, regardless of whether they're collecting and remitting TOT, we want the process to begin to, if there has to be an administrative process, I think the direction is to stop it. Correct?
Yeah, I understand my direction to be, to start the revocation process.
Do you need a motion on that?
A motion would be useful.
Okay. Anyone want to attempt a motion?
Motion to initiate revocation processes for any licenses associated with short-term rental activity operating in violation of municipal code.
Second.
For discussion?
Yes.
May I add to the motion and to cease collecting TOT?
I'll accept that amendment.
Okay.
Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes. All right. Do you need any further direction on us, from us on this item?
I don't think so. We good, Mr. Summers?
Anything further by the council?
We need, we have what we need on this item. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, again.
Can we take a break? I need to take a break.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break.[1228.25] All right, we're going to take a five-minute break.[251.34]